Good afternoon. I am calling the regular council meeting to order. Today is December 22, 2020, and I'd like to provide notice that the city council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice if needed. Ms. Wobar, can you please take roll call?
Mayor Dizzi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Solis, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to do so. Please stand as you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, will you please read the mission statement for us?
It's always my pleasure to do so. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, well, right along here to our public participation. Public participation is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes, and the council is not able to respond to any comments because the topics have not been agendized. City Clerk, do we have any public comments for today?
We do not at this time.
Great. Moving on right along then. We are to Agenda Item Number Five, Review of Draft Agenda for the January 5, 2021, City Council Meeting. Councilmembers, do we have any questions regarding the upcoming agenda? All right. Well, then, we are now down to Agenda Item Number Six, which is our Community Development Block Grant, CDBG: Introduction and Overview: Establishment of CDBG Council Priorities for Program Years 2021 and 2022. City staff, take it away.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm just trying to find the right presentation. Looks like I have more than one on here.
Christine, this is Greg. It was up momentarily and then it went away.
You know what? That was the wrong one. Let's see. And this is the wrong one, too. And I don't understand because I don't even have those open. It's very weird. Okay, one moment. Sorry, guys. I was already...
Cancelled. Our Housing Director, while Christine is looking for that presentation, let me frame a little bit about what you're going to see. Every two years when new council members are elected, we come before council as housing staff to ask council to establish priorities related to our Community Development Block Grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Some folks have made reference that this presentation is often annual, and it's not. It's only when we have new council members. So what you're about to see is a framing of Community Development Block Grant, where we've been working very hard as staff to stop using our acronyms, and then ask you to establish priorities for funding going out into the community for the next two years. It looks like Christine has her presentation ready to go, and I'll turn it over to her. Thanks, Christine.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. Sorry about that, everyone. Little technical difficulties. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Christine Pavlik, and I am the Housing and Grants Administrator for the City of Flagstaff Housing Section. And I'm here today to talk to you about the Community Development Block Grant Program, which we often refer to as CDBG. And I'm going to provide you with an introduction and overview of the CDBG program. We'll talk about different eligible uses of CDBG funds. And then, as we do every two years with new council, we'll establish your council priorities for CDBG funds for the 2021 and 2022 program years. So, the Community Development Block Grant Program provides funding for housing and community development activities, and it's funded through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is also known as HUD. Flagstaff is considered an entitlement community, which means that we receive an annual allocation. And that annual allocation is based on a formula that takes into consideration our population, the percent of our population that's considered low to moderate income, the age of our housing stock, and other community information. The most important thing to know is that we have no control or influence over this allocation from HUD. It's all based on that formula, given the current year's total national CDBG funding. So how does the city access the funds? In order to continue to receive our annual allocation, the city must submit four documents to HUD at various times. So the first is our Annual Action Plan. It's due every May, and it tells HUD what the city is going to do with that year's allocation. Additionally, we at times have to submit substantial amendments to the Annual Action Plan. They're due as needed in order to perhaps reallocate funds from one project to another that didn't pan out, or to incorporate additional funds, as was the case with the CDBGCV. That stands for Coronavirus, for the Coronavirus Response Funds, provided by the CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. The next report that we submit to HUD is due every September. It's called the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation. We also call it a CAPR, and it basically tells HUD what we did do with the funding, what accomplishments were meant, how many households and individuals were served, as well as how much leverage, how many community dollars were leveraged with the CDBG funds. And then every five years, we submit what's called the Consolidated Plan. And this is a five-year assessment of housing and community development needs. The last time this document was submitted to HUD was in 2016, and it has defined Flagstaff's goals for CDBG funds use for the last five years. We're actually currently working on the next Consolidated Plan, which will be submitted along with the Annual Action Plan this May. Along with that will be the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. It's essentially the city's fair housing plan, and it's submitted with the Consolidated Plan. It takes information gained from community and stakeholder services or surveys, and it identifies obstacles to fair housing attainment faced by city residents. So we're actually conducting surveys right now, and we'll be presenting the drafts of both of these documents to you in April. So how can the city use the money? It's essentially, as you, the council sees fit, based on community needs that have been identified in the Consolidated Plan, as well as based on the primary objective and one or more of the national objectives, which we will go over next. So the primary national objective of the CDBG program is the development of viable urban communities through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity, all of which must serve low to moderate income persons. And the definition of low to moderate income is 80% of the area median income or below. So, for example, a household of four in the City of Flagstaff cannot make more than $60,150 annually. Along with serving low to moderate income persons, to be eligible in activity must qualify as one of the following: limited clientele, housing activities, area benefit activities, and job creation and retention. Limited clientele activities benefit low to moderate income individuals, or those who are presumed to be low to moderate income. Yes? Sorry, I thought someone said my name. Or those who are presumed to be low to moderate income. So that includes survivors of domestic violence, people who are experiencing homelessness, disabled adults, et cetera. So some examples of past projects would be operational assistance provided for coordinated entry, homeless outreach operations, and operational costs for shelters. Housing activities provide and improve permanent residential structures, which will be occupied by low to moderate income persons. Some examples of past projects would be down payment and closing cost assistance, owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, which is a program administered by the city, and new housing developments specifically built by community-based development organizations. Area benefit activities must benefit all of the residents in a low-income neighborhood, which a low-income neighborhood is defined as a neighborhood that more than 50% of the households are low to moderate income. So as established in our Consolidated Plan, the City of Flagstaff has designated four target neighborhoods, and they are Sunnyside, Southside, La Plaza Vieja, and Pine Knoll. An example of past projects meeting this national objective would be improvements at the Hal Jensen Recreation Center in Sunnyside, playground improvements at Arroyo and Guadalupe Park, and street infrastructure improvements in La Plaza Vieja and other target neighborhoods. The last activity is job creation or retention. These are activities designed to create and retain permanent jobs specifically for low to moderate income persons. And an activity that was funded with CDBG in the past under this national objective was job training and creation at Sharon's Attic. So when they were first starting up, they were able to utilize CDBG funds to create, I believe it was at least three full-time positions for low to moderate income individuals. All right, so let's talk about money specifics for CDBG. CDBG has two funding caps. One of these HUD funding caps is a 20% cap on administration costs. And so this goes for not only the city, but also the agencies that we partner with. For the city, we take 10% for our administrative costs, and then an additional 10% for indirect costs. And an indirect is, basically, it allows the city to collect for costs related to administering federal or state contracts. It includes the fabulous legal assistance we receive, IT, computers, et cetera. And ultimately, the city is responsible for the use of these funds, even if they're spent by an outside agency. So it's our job to make sure that the partner agencies aren't missing these caps and missing the marks. An additional cap is on public service activities. So public service activities are projects that fund the operations of programs that serve low to moderate income persons. So as we are well aware, public service is a really important part of community development, and HUD allows 15% of the CDBG allocation funds to go towards these types of activities. So in 2020, our total allowable public service allocation amount was going to be $94,656. Ultimately, we were able to award more funds to public service last year, but that was because of waivers that were provided by the CARES Act. So the CARES Act waived the limitation for not only coronavirus funds, but also our 2019 and 2020 allocations. And at this time, it remains to be seen if that same waiver will be available for our 2021 allocation. We're waiting to hear from HUD, but there is a possibility. So in the proposal process, this is the most competitive category with the least amount of funding, and past projects in the public services category would include operational expenses for domestic violence or homeless shelters, and eviction and foreclosure prevention. Lastly, there's a criteria that the City of Flagstaff must follow when administering CDBG funds, and that's that 70% of CDBG must benefit low to moderate income persons. And historically, the city is proud to say we've always served 100% of low to moderate income persons with our CDBG allocations. So let's talk about how the annual allocation is distributed to the community. An open proposal process is conducted yearly, allowing Flagstaff agencies to apply for use of funds. And this project will begin for 2021 on December 28. And we kick it off with a public meeting that this year will be held virtually. It's advertised in the newspaper and then also sent out through the Continuum of Care and social media. And we provide an overview of CDBG much like this one, and we kind of get into the nitty-gritty of the application process for agencies that are interested. So as far as the proposal process goes, staff releases that Notice of Funding Availability, and it's available to all agencies. We also make available technical assistance meetings, and so that just means that an agency is welcome to meet with myself or other Justina or Sarah one-on-one and have questions answered. We do some brainstorming, and we try to answer any questions they have about the application process and what goes into administering a CDBG-funded project. Then we have all of the applications submitted, and staff assesses if the projects are eligible for CDBG funding. And then the proposed projects that are eligible are reviewed by our community ranking committee. And so each member of the ranking committee individually scores their proposals based on how the agency answered the question in their proposal, and each question has a weighted scoring criteria. So the committee meets, discusses in great detail the results, and those numbers are then averaged out. And the ranking committee is comprised of both internal staff as well as external experts from the community. Staff then brings the weighted scored proposals to council for final funding decisions, and we will actually be presenting to you in April with the weighted scoring results of each proposal for you to make final funding decisions for 2021 funds. Whoops, I went forward a little too fast. So one of the items that is scored is whether or not the projects meet one of council's priorities. So this provides an additional 10 points to grantees proposing projects that meet one of your specific priorities. And so that is why this meeting is really important. We're able to establish these priorities that applications will get extra points for. Once council selects this year's subrecipients, they enter into a contract with the city, and these are the primary contractual requirements. We do require that they follow city procurement, provide certificates of insurance that meet the city standards. We ask them to provide monthly reports, as well as be available for monitorings and audits. In addition, there are federal overlay statutes that the subrecipients have to follow. So again, the city is responsible for monitoring all grant compliance, and we work really hard to help agencies understand these statutes and to create policies and procedures that will help keep them compliant. Our agencies have to abide by federal labor standards, Davis-Bacon procurement standards, so we really work with them to help them understand these requirements. So the proposal process includes extensive public participation. This includes three public meetings. Like I said, that one-on-one technical assistance with interested agencies, and then staff facilitates that ranking committee that includes community members. We also publish our draft annual action plan on our website, and it's available for public comments for 30 days prior to the April council meetings. And so we will provide all of that public comment to you when you are making funding considerations. So what's changed in recent years with CDBG? So as you can see, in 2003, we received our highest allocation, and last year in 2020, the city received a little over $600,000. It's important to know that while performance measures are really important to the City of Flagstaff, they're very important to HUD, and so data collection is crucial, and it also requires a lot of administrative time of our partner agencies. Some of the data that we report back to HUD includes the levels of area median income that we're serving, female head of household, race, ethnicity, and other info from each activity. So this chart demonstrates the historical allocation since the year 2000. You can see 2003 being our largest allocation. Then you can see the decline during the Great Recession, slowly increasing in 2014 and kind of leveling off, and we really hope that this number will continue to rise. Additionally, in March, Congress passed the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, providing over $5 billion to the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the city was able to receive two allocations from that CARES Act. We call these CDBGCV funds, and CV stands for Coronavirus. The CARES Act provided multiple waivers, including that waiver on only 15% of the funds being available for public services. And they also provided us over $1 million in funds specifically for the preparation, prevention, and response to the Coronavirus. And then every fall, we submit the Annual Performance Review, called the CAPR, to HUD, and it identifies goals met and numbers served with activities undertaken during the program year. So our 2019 CAPR highlighted that CDBG funds served 6,564 individuals and created five new housing units through various projects. And some of those projects were, we provided operational assistance to Flagstaff Shelter Services. Sharon Manor is being expanded. They are adding a second level with five additional units of transitional housing. And then Flagstaff Family Food Center is remodeling their bathrooms to be ADA compliant, as well as obtaining all-new kitchen appliances as well. So as mentioned, the city submits the five-year Consolidated Plan every five years, and we last submitted it in 2016. So the creation of this document right here, it involved widespread community participation. The development was based on public and stakeholder input, as well as input from the populations that are served by CDBG funds. And so this HUD table identifies conditions, needs, and goals. And in order to be eligible for funding, a project must meet one of these HUD-defined goals. And so the priority levels you see there of high and low, they don't reflect the lack of need for an activity. It simply identifies activities that are likely to be able to be addressed with our limited CDBG funding. The goals include things like increasing the availability and affordability of quality housing for low and moderate income individuals for both owner and renter households, investing in housing, as well as public and supportive services for vulnerable populations, revitalizing Flagstaff neighborhoods, and strengthening the coordination and delivery of resources. So these goals and priorities are being reevaluated for the 2021 Consolidated Plan for the next five years, and they will actually be presented to you in April as well. So in addition to the Consolidated Plan goals, there are also regional plan goals that are relevant to CDBG priorities. So the first of these is to preserve and enhance existing neighborhoods. And we meet this goal with projects providing infrastructure improvements, as well as playground improvements, and owner-occupied housing rehab for homes in target neighborhoods, which preserves the affordable housing stock in those existing neighborhoods. Additionally, the regional plan includes goals around expanding affordability and availability of low-income housing, as well as preserving existing housing stock and addressing housing barriers for persons with disabilities or other special needs. And one way to meet goals in this category would be to provide additional permanent supportive housing in our community. And lastly, the regional plan goal of eliminating homelessness. CDBG can address this goal with projects that expand transitional housing, funding programs preventing homelessness, and providing adequate resources to individuals and families experiencing homelessness. So the priorities for council for the past two years, including housing, both rental and ownership housing, neighborhood revitalization, homelessness, workforce job training, and education, including early childhood development. So some of the projects that were funded under each priority during the past two years include housing stabilization and eviction prevention administered by Coconino County Health and Human Services, owner-occupied housing rehabilitation administered by the city, infrastructure improvements in target neighborhoods, which included city capital projects that provided, for example, playground improvements at Arroyo and Guadalupe Parks, expansions of transitional housing for homeless individuals at Sharon Manor, and workforce job training in the textile arts provided to low to moderate income individuals with a nine-month paid apprenticeship by Threaded Together. We did not have any projects funded or proposed under the education priority, though we did reach out to organizations providing these services. So different this year than any other previous years is, of course, the COVID-19 pandemic, and it can add the potential need to prioritize funding for projects that prevent, respond to, and prepare for COVID-19. So this can include public service operations for homeless shelters that would allow for social distancing, as well as the creation of affordable housing as the pandemic has led to many individuals losing income and has increased our already great need for attainable and affordable housing. Additionally, legal aid for individuals facing eviction or other COVID-related impacts, all of these could be included in a possible COVID-19 prevention and response priority. So I'm available for any questions you might have as you determine the CDBG priorities for the next two years. Also, Sarah Dar, Housing Director, and Justina Costa, Housing Manager, are available to answer any historical questions you might have and provide input as needed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlik. Councilmember Aslan had a question about the... I'm getting a reverb here. Was asking if there's a map or something to that effect to kind of delineate the four target neighborhoods. Is there anything easily available to that regard?
There certainly is, Mayor. This is Sarah Dar, Housing Director, and I'd like to say thank you for giving us a chance to pull such a map out of the files and throw it up here on the screen. I'm going to talk you through the neighborhood boundaries a little bit so that they're clear. Our largest target neighborhood is Sunnyside. Please keep in mind that these are built off of census tracks and block groups. They are not boundaries created by city staff. These come to us via HUD. So the most eastern boundary of Sunnyside is Fourth Street. Cedar at the top takes in some of the Mesa, comes down Isabel to Mountain View. Yes, right here, that intersects with Route 66. So it does not encompass the eastern side of Fourth Street. That's how these boundaries work. So it does encompass the west side of Fourth Street, but not the east side of Fourth Street. Coming over here to the west side of town, we have Southside and Pine Knoll. Now, when our community's Southside and Pine Knoll often identify as one neighborhood, for HUD's purposes, they are two. And we, as staff, respect and recognize how the neighborhood has self-defined some areas that do not fall within these groups, and that is because of how HUD defines these. So while you see them as two names here, in our vernacular in our community, they are often referred to as one. So Southside bounces up against NAU, and Pine Knoll, the main delineating street for Pine Knoll, is Lone Tree. Plaza Vieja is our fourth neighborhood, which is bound by Milton Route 66 and Blackbird Roost, and then up along the tracks as well. I hope this helped understand a little bit more about where our target neighborhoods are, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. I really do appreciate you being able to put that up, even just for public interest, to clearly define what these neighborhoods are we're talking about, even though I'm sure all of us having this conversation generally understand where these places are. Some of the dividing lines can be very specific, and this is helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to add to the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dark. Councilmembers, do we have questions for our city staff? Well, I'll start with one. I know it's not fully finalized yet, but is there any expectation, given the recent federal budget and additional funding for HUD, that we potentially could be receiving more money next year than, you know, has been the trend of, you know, about $620,000 or so the last couple of years? Are we expecting more funds? Or, yeah, I want to see on the federal level what that speaks to us in this regard.
Absolutely. Those numbers are very new. And reading industry summary, it looks like there's about an additional $25 million to CDBG over last year. And of course, those dollars are split nationwide. So we, in the past several years, have not actually gotten our allocation amount from HUD until after our planning documents are due. So we have some ways to accommodate that within the planning and public process. I anticipate our funding amount will be up a bit, given that there is some additional money, but $25 million split nationwide is not a ton. So I think we'll still be in approximately the same ballpark.
Okay, thank you. Question about this, are we limited to just five priorities as we have this discussion for, you know, individuals who may want to add something to this? Do we need to subtract something in the process, is my question? Oh, Ms. Pavlik, you're muted.
You're not limited to five priorities, and you're also not required to provide an entire, you know, five priorities. However, it's important to keep in mind that the hope is that by making priorities, we're able to award additional points to applications to help us narrow down what those CDBG funds should be used for. So we don't want the priorities to be too broad. We wouldn't want the priorities to be too narrow, but we definitely want the priorities to be what you, as council, see as the best use of CDBG funds.
Excellent. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Daggett has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Christine, great presentation. Thank you very much. And prior to my running for city council, I served on the Scoring Committee for these grants, and I can just tell you that it's a very rigorous process, and these funds have gone to fund some really outstanding projects that will benefit our community for years and years. Now, to my question, I noticed that there were a couple of parks projects. Do you hear reverb?
No.
Is it just me?
No.
Okay.
I think it's you.
Okay. So what is the thinking between maintenance funds through parks and rec versus using that money from CDBG? that money from CDBG?
That's a great question. I'm going to have Justina kind of answer that one. She has a more historical idea, as I'm pretty new here.
Mayor, council, good evening. Justina Costa, Housing Manager. So to answer that question, the way that we look at those activities is that after we receive what the community feels that they would see as issues and what they're looking to fund, if there is money left over, we go internally and we work with our capital division to see if there are any projects that they currently don't have funding for that they would like to address. And so that's how those projects come about.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet has a question.
Thank you, Christine, for your presentation. I'm wondering, on the education, early childhood development, you had mentioned that that wasn't enacted for the 2019, 2020 priorities. Did no one bite on that? And where did we go from there when that wasn't part of the plan?
Yeah, so we did not have anybody submit applications that identified that priority. And, you know, it's hard to say why. Sometimes CDBG funds can be hard to administer. It's a federally funded program, and there's a lot of administrative requirements that can be hard for certain agencies. We really don't know why it wasn't utilized. I think at the time when these priorities were established, there was a very big push in our community for early childhood funding and projects. And so my understanding was that that priority may have been put in to kind of create a possibility of having CDBG as a funding source for those projects. Ultimately, the funds went to other projects like housing, neighborhood revitalization, and infrastructure, essentially things that fit in the other priorities there.
Thank you.
All right, council, do we have any other questions before we turn this over to see what priorities we may want to add or change at this point? Do we have any other questions for staff? All right, I'm not seeing anything here. Well, I guess I'd like to then open up the floor. Councilmembers, if you are, would like to add anything for our priorities or change anything, Councilmember McCarthy, and followed by Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. I've taken a couple of things into account as I sit here. One is that the previous council, just a couple of weeks ago, declared a climate emergency or, excuse me, a housing emergency, housing crisis. And the other thing is that I'm very aware that Flagstaff Shelter Services is actually running in the hole because of all the extra services they've had to provide during the COVID fiasco. So my suggestion is that we focus on housing, and that would be rental and ownership, and homelessness. And I think if we focus on just those two things, that that would provide money where it's needed right now, and it would probably make the administration of these funds to be a little more streamlined because they wouldn't be so spread out, and they'll be focused. So, I mean, I definitely want to hear what other council members think, but that's kind of what's going through my mind right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Vice Mayor Daggett, followed by Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I, so, we, what am I trying to say here? Most of the projects that come into CDBG are for housing, or housing-related in some way. I don't want to restrict what projects can be proposed because we don't know what kind of fantastic project could come forward. But I can tell you, just from reading these applications year after year, that they are mostly centered around housing. Council has the final say. Council has the final say when the projects are presented to us, and I think that someone needs to mute their microphone. So council has the final say when these projects come forward, and if there's a project proposed that comes forward to us that is nowhere near where our priorities are, you know, we could change up the scoring at that point. But I think that what we're going to see in the next year is mostly projects that are around housing and homelessness. But I would like to not limit the scope in case there is an outstanding project that comes forward from some organization.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking at the housing continuum, and I just want to make sure, at least for me, that we do keep the homeless shelters on it, as well as the rental and ownership for the housing. Those are definitely part of what I believe is important keeping with this, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the discussion. Thank you, Christine and team, for the presentation. Excellent presentation. So I agree with the conversation so far. I also agree with Vice Mayor in terms of not closing, having, you know, tunnel vision. But at the same time, I think it is good that we do have a focus, but while staying open-minded, of course. The comments I wrote down for this conversation are really a couple of things. I obviously am supportive of what the community needs and what the neighborhoods need, and how we end up spending the CDBG funding, I'm going to be supportive of regardless. But the areas of focus that I'm personally really kind of honing in on are a couple of things. One is permanent supportive housing, and so that's housing with wraparound services. And then the second thing is cultural sensitivity, you know, not just, you know, through the efforts that are proposed to us, but how can we become more culturally sensitive through our practices when engaging with some of our most vulnerable in our community? And so those are my two thoughts, Mayor. Let me see what else I have written down. I'm also intrigued to see if there's any way we can do any kind of revitalization of our government housing, Section 8 housing, and also, I think that's it, but I think we just need to get, I'd like to see us focus on just getting folks in the housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor, you're muted.
Oh, I was, okay, Ms. Dar, you have a comment?
I have a quick answer to Councilmember Shimoney's question relative to the housing that we own and operate through public housing, and funds for those units are provided through a different arm of HUD. While these funds could be eligible to be utilized in that way, they've often been prioritized to be used in the community because we do receive separate funding for our public housing units.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, I guess just to put a finer point, you know, I'm understanding that I might have misunderstood what permanent, so can you talk about what permanent supportive housing is, just to clarify that for me?
Permanent supportive housing is housing where an individual or a family, a household, does not have to meet any criteria to enter the unit or stay within the unit as far as substance abuse, et cetera. It is housing that if someone were to, let me rephrase this, I'm going to start over. Quite often, housing for those exiting homelessness comes with conditions. You have to be sober. You have to stay sober. You need to get a certain number of job interviews, et cetera. Permanent supportive housing eliminates those barriers and puts housing first. To solve homelessness, that means housing people. So if someone were to continue using substances, then their housing is still there. If that individual breaks the law and ends up going to jail or prison when they get back out, that housing is there. So it creates housing that is permanent. Supportive means there's support that goes with that housing for those individuals or families, and that it's also not transitional. There isn't a time limit applied to it. Transitional housing is typically a two-year housing commitment, and within those two years, they, within those two years, they're expected to change their life circumstances enough to afford housing on their own. They also must, to qualify for permanent supportive housing, have a disability. So it's a different style, it's a different type.
Okay, so I think I mean that, and also rapid rehousing, I believe, is the other category?
So rapid rehousing is a specific program that helps pay rent in diminishing amounts over time as a household becomes stabilized. So rapid rehousing is a specific program, not necessarily a type of program. So those dollars typically go out into the community overall.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm open to, I think you helped, and I'm fairly sure that I'm basically into all the above when it comes to that, just getting people into housing as needed and providing the wraparound services that are, you know, of interest to the individual for them to best succeed. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah.
Great, well, I had a question regarding neighborhood revitalization, that category. If, I understand that that's going to be sidewalks and so forth, does that also include, for example, improving high-speed internet infrastructure for the low-income neighborhood? Or, you know, if somebody puts a proposal for public hotspots or something to be able to give greater internet access, is that included in the neighborhood revitalization as the, and is it included in the capital improvement category, basically? That's my question.
That's a great question. So pretty much, it can be anything that benefits the entire neighborhood. And so parks are included, public facilities are included, like the Flagstaff Family Food Center, and infrastructure for Wi-Fi or hotspots would absolutely be included. We would, of course, have to look up the particulars and the specifics of what CDBG could pay for under that project, but that would pretty likely be an eligible project, absolutely.
Great, well, I think I'll echo the other council members that, obviously, housing is the number-one priority to me amidst the CDBG funds, but I would like to make sure that potentially the high-speed internet is incorporated with the neighborhood revitalization or something to that effect, so that can be included as a capital improvement project. We do have Councilmember Aslan, followed by Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mayor. I can be brief. I don't have anything to add, but I did want to voice my support for what I've heard so far with that particular priority on addressing our housing crisis, which we all agree is a very pressing situation, and we should be throwing every resource we can at it. I would like to say, Vice Mayor, your comment about being open-minded and allowing for other proposals to come in, I think is very astute. We can always hone in on our priorities if there's, if we're finding we're looking at a zero-sum game sometime down the road.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Solis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you just came up with a brilliant idea for neighborhood associations to apply for grants for Wi-Fi and hotspots in their respective neighborhoods, especially the four target neighborhoods, the Sunnyside, South Side, La Plaza Vieja, and Pine Knoll. No, I agree with having housing rental ownership addressing homelessness as top-two priorities. And then comes neighborhood revitalization. As for workforce job training and education, early childhood development, that could be wrapped in one big goal, which is workforce development, which covers kinder to preschool kinder to high school to college. Some kind of training to be able to enter into the workforce that, workforce development certainly addresses the CDBG eligibility of job creation and job retention activities and economic activities as a top priority nationwide. So again, housing, any form of housing, rental ownership, addressing homelessness, neighborhood revitalization, and an all-encompassing workforce development. With respect to Councilmember Shimoney's comment about cultural sensitivity and engaging most vulnerable sector, I agree, and that can be done through projects that will come along through providing housing, any projects that improve and revitalize the neighborhood, and of course, workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Is, I guess the question to city staff is, is there a way to incorporate this in the wording of workforce job training as well as early childhood development into the same category? Or, I just want to make sure we're still going to be able to incorporate that, and the points are earned from both sides of it if it is incorporated into one?
Absolutely, yeah. I think workforce development can cover, like Councilmember Solis said, from birth to and on. So basically, being able to obtain an early childhood education will make it more likely that our workforce will be educated, that they will be able to take job opportunities. They absolutely fit together.
Great, well, that's good. I definitely want to make sure that we are having both of those included, even if it's in a, you know, a single category, particularly with early childhood development and early childhood education, which is extremely important. So, all right, council, I guess, do we have any other comments, any other questions from council? I'll just give it a few seconds here. All right, well, to, I guess, to wrap it up here, it does sound like we are all in agreement with the housing being a priority. Oh, Ms. Pavlik?
You know, I was just going to do what you were about to do and just kind of sum up and make sure I had a good idea of what we're kind of hearing from you guys. So like you said, housing, including rental and ownership, homelessness, both of which would include providing permanent supportive housing, and then neighborhood revitalization and workforce development?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm hearing from council, unless there's anything we're missing. Councilmembers, please jump in here. And, yeah, just to reiterate, I guess, on my behalf, just making sure that high-speed internet possibilities are available with the neighborhood revitalization. Councilmember Shimoney has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Pavlik. I might miss, did you mention anything about the cultural sensitivity piece? I'm not sure if council majority weighed in on that, but that, to me, at least, is a really big deal and an area that, if you don't
and an area that if you don't focus on, kinda get brushed aside. It's lovely to see our applicants do their best to focus on that subject if possible. Not sure that majority agrees with me, but that's my thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Ms. Dar has a comment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We missed, as staff, creating a priority around cultural sensitivity. Is that something you would like added to the priority list? Or something we emphasize within our public participation process? Or see all of the above? I'm not quite sure we understand how to, unless you just want it listed as a priority. We were taking that as, as generalized feedback. We're, of course, happy to make a priority if that's what you wish.
Are you saying, when you say public particip-, you said public participation?
Uh, public participation. We have several public meetings surrounding this, the first of which is the release of the grant application itself. And we can, we can emphasize that, we can put that council's interested in it. We can also put it on the priorities list. I, I, we, just as staff, we're not, we're not picking up on that as a priority, but we can make it one, if that's council's direction.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. And, and I'll just share with council, you know, I talked to a number of folks who are of different cultures, who feel like services at times aren't best meeting their needs. So I think it is a priority, Sarah, is what I'm getting to in my comments and that, you know, I guess my point is like, you know, for those applicants, how are they integrating cultural sensitivity and, and working with partners to, you know, enhance what their efforts are? You know, a great example is what the, the shelter is doing in partnership with NACA, you know, in their, in their services. And that's massive, and that's been a real positive thing, is what I'm hearing. So, you know, more programs like that in the services that are provided, whether it's through housing and wraparound services or, you know, job training, how are we integrating cultural sensitivity? I guess it's like a overarching. And I, and Sarah, I trust your team to kinda take that and run with it however is most appropriate. Thank you.
But if I could ask one more clarifying piece surrounding specifically cultural sensitivity, we can tackle this one of two ways. So for the priorities, each application coming in that meets a specific council priority is awarded five additional points, which means that those have a greater chance of receiving a recommendation that matches council priorities. The other ability here is that we can create a cultural question to go into the grant application. So each and every grant applicant would need to specify how they are addressing those items within their application, or if they are not addressing them. Do you have a preference? We're happy to tackle it either way.
Yeah, if I could jump in here. Ms. Dar, I'm just wondering, when we are doing this scoring, then, if we had it as its separate priority, does that mean that certain applications might have, if it's addressing homelessness and, and cultural sensitivity, that then they would get 10 points as opposed to five? As in, is there, is, would this create a stacking effect as we do the scoring?
Uh, Mayor, typically, no. This is a pass fail. Quite often, we have housing projects that are in target neighborhoods. Those get five points because they are, they are meeting those council priorities. So it's not creating a stacking, they're not close coupons. We, we don't generally stack them.
Okay, thank you. Shimonis, do you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I think as a question on the application would be appropriate in my mind. And, I mean, if, if it makes sense for it to be a priority and have extra bonus points for that, then so be it. I just, you know, I, I definitely would like to see us address cultural sensitivity through our efforts moving forward as best as we can. So whatever it takes to achieve that, I'm, I'm gonna support. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Shimonis, for bringing that up. I, I agree that it is extremely important. And I think it would be ni- nice to have that, you know, question about equity and inclusion, cultural sensitivity in the application for all of the applicants. I, I think that needs to be just in the back of everyone's mind as, when we do these projects, to have it clearly stated so that when we make the decisions, we can ourselves see that this has a particularly larger impact on equity and inclusion in our community. So just, my suggestion would be not to have it in the council priorities list, but if we can have those as the norm in the applications, I think that would be really great.
We are happy to do so. And I'm actually really excited about seeing how agencies answer an equity and inclusion, cultural sensitivity question. So we'll make sure that those details are included in the presentation of the projects that are proposed to you when we come back in April.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dar. And again, thank you, council member Shimonis, for bringing that up. I think that was, that was a really great idea to be including in this. So if we are, just making sure we have everyone's comments taken care of. If council is in agreement, I believe what we have here is, from a change from the previous CDBG council priorities, is to incorporate workforce job training and education into a single category and ensure that our high-speed internet infrastructure is included in the revitalization, and we will be including the cultural sensitivity, inclusion, equity questions in all of the applications. Am I gathering that right, council? Making sure we have the four for direction here, if we can get some thumbs up.
Yes, I'm giving my verbal thumbs up. This is Becky.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I have, I have a thumbs up from council member Shimonis. I'm giving a thumbs up, I believe we need a fourth individual.
Miranda Sweet, thumbs up.
Excellent.
Regina Salas, thumbs up.
All right, well, I think we have a direction. Anything else, council?
McCarthy is in agreement.
Great. Thank you, council member McCarthy. All right, well, that brings us down to agenda item seven, which is our assignment of city council liaisons. Staff recommended action to assign council members to the following: Metro Plan, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, Northern Arizona Municipal Waters Users Association Audit Committee, Economic Collaborative of Northern Arizona Executive Board, Northern Arizona Council of Governments Self-Insurance Trust Fund Board, Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council, Sister Cities, Arizona League of Cities and Towns Executive Committees, as well as our city commissions. So, uh, council.
Don't forget the party planning committee.
Uh, Mayor and council, thank you so much. This is Stacy Phobar, the deputy city clerk. Stacy Salzberg is out today, but I am here to answer questions and have also put together a little cheat sheet that I can share that hopefully will help us assign everyone correctly. There has been two quick updates. Under Metro Plan, we would like to assign someone to the Arizona Department of Transportation. That is usually the council member assigned to the Executive Board of Metro Plan. And for the Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, it was updated last winter. That NETA updated the rules of procedure, and there's a total of three assignments for the board, the two board members and one alternative. So let me go ahead and share my screen with you all. Great, and please let me know if you have any questions. I've also asked liaisons from each of the commissions to be available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Phobar. Well, I would like to, oh, council member McCarthy has a question.
Uh, thank you. Stacy, would you repeat that? The Arizona Trans-, it was the Transportation Board or something? Is that something that we have a seat on? Or are you talking about the Arizona Transportation Board, which we don't have a seat on, but, but we tend to go to those meetings? Like Charlie Odegaard always did?
Uh, yes, this is Charlie Odegaard's seat. Shane Dilly, did you have some more information for council member McCarthy regarding this?
Absolutely, thank you, Stacy. Happy to jump in. Council member Odegaard, members, I'm sorry, council member McCarthy and members of the council suggesting that staff is recommending a, uh, replace the role that council member, former council member Odegaard played. We feel that this is, although not an official seat on, on the board, but a designated community representative from the elected council, has really taken our community a long way in, in, in building and maintaining a productive relationship with the, the Board of Transportation. We've seen the fruits of that effort as council member Odegaard followed that board around the state for their monthly meetings, championed the, the city's needs and causes. We've seen a, a number of projects get funded and advanced in their five-year CIP. We think this is very much a worthwhile effort, and staff is recommending that, uh, to the pleasure of the council, somebody is designated, steps forward and is designated the, the community representative that will kind of follow suit and follow that board around. Certainly, that, that individual on council will be supported by, by staff in, you know, in information to share, talking points, even sometimes being accompanied by staff if needed. I know that Jeff Mileback with the Metro Plan does the same thing in terms of, it's, it's really a partnered, uh, joint effort in supporting this elected official in this role. We feel it's very important. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
So, Mayor, can I follow up on that?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, so I might point out that at the last Metro Plan meeting, that they nominated and elected me to be the chair of the Metro Plan. And the Arizona Transportation Board meeting that was held last week, I actually went to that visually, or virtually, of course. So, um, I don't know how you wanna handle these things, but I would like to volunteer to stay on Metro Plan for continuity because I've been there for a couple of years, and that I would take over unofficially because we don't get an official seat. But like Mr. Dilly said, unofficially, but attend there and do their meetings. It probably also makes sense that I would be, the council liaison to the Transportation Committee because all of these things tie together like brothers and sisters. And the only other committee that, or commission that I would be interested in would be the Housing Commission, which I am the liaison on right now. So that's my comments for now. Thank you. And I'm open-minded to discussion between the other council members on all of that.
Yeah, thank you, council member McCarthy. I think that would be good to, let's go through each council member and let us know what you are interested in, strongly interested in for each of these commissions and committees so that way we can, yeah, see where we're all at in the process of elimination. If only one individual is up for it, we can cross that off the list and let, and move on to the others. So if, uh, council member Aslan, I do see that you said you'd like to join Metro Plan as a liaison. Would you like to also mention some of the other commissions that you are particularly interested in joining or staying on?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have my own version of the list over here as the city clerk scrolls up and down and goes through this thing and bounces back and forth. Excuse me, I would like to join Metro Plan. It would be a great pleasure and honor for me to do that. And then, uh, just trying to keep things pretty simple and straightforward for now, I, I was just elected the chair of the Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council. I, I think I should definitely stay in that role. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with staying with the Sustainability Commission and with Open Spaces Commission. But if someone else is really interested in one of those two, please speak up, and I'm happy to have a conversation here about it.
Great, well, um, thank you, council member Aslan. The, let's just go, I, let's start again with, oh, Vice Mayor Daggett. Would you like to comment on what boards you might want to, or committees and commissions you'd like to be on?
Certainly. Excuse me. So I would love to either have a seat or an alternate seat on Metro Plan. And and I would love to be an alternate for the Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council. That is the foster puppy that I spoke of earlier. And I would love to be on the Housing Commission. I understand that council member McCarthy currently serves on that if he would consider allowing me to step on. I would love that. Now, I ranked mine, so, let me say this. There's nothing that's not interesting to me. And so I ranked mine in order of what I was most interested in. So how do you want me to? Do you want me just to say my top ones?
Yeah, how, or how about, give us your top five?
Okay. Okay, so of commissions, housing's number one, sustainability's number two, open spaces is number three, water commission is number four, transportation is number five, and then, as I said, the, the Colorado Plateau and the Metro Plan, even if I could be an alternate.
Great, and councilman Solis, I apologize, I missed your earlier question or comment, so, Ms. Solis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, um, I have served for the last two years as an alter- alternate to the Metro Plan, and I would like for council to consider myself as one of the three liaison, not an alternate. And then I do have, uh, I'm on the board of the Flagstaff Cities, Flagstaff Sister Cities International Nonprofit. So I would also volunteer to continue as a liaison to the Sister Cities initiative. And with respect to the commissions, I wanna continue serving as council liaison on Airport Tourism and Parks and Rec Commission because they all tie into, uh, the BBB fund revenues. And then, um, for the last two years, I was appointed as, as, uh, as alternate to the mayor on the Econo Board. And I would like to continue that service as well. And then, um, I also wanna offer myself, myself to, to serve on the, there Arizona League of Cities and Towns Executive Committee, pending nomination of the city. I am cognizant that historically, the nominating committee tends to select mayors. I understand that it is important to have a strong and balanced league executive. As the first Asian-American to be elected on Flagstaff City Council, I am a strong advocate of home rule and local control. And, um, as our nation recovers from the impact of a global pandemic, municipalities and cities, not only in Arizona, but throughout the nation, are faced with increasing demands for service from our citizens. So in the various leadership I play in Flagstaff and in Northern Arizona, I constantly seek inclusivity, empowerment, and opportunities for collaboration and private, public partnerships. and opportunities for collaboration and private public partnerships. So, so those are my requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. We have here next, let's go to Councilmember Shimonie. If you'd like to let us know what you're, what you're interested in.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I find myself engaging in a lot of things that aren't on this list on a pretty regular basis, such as the CJCC Group, which is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council that is through the county. And I'm also on one of their subcommittees. But currently, our executive committee members are Councilmember Wieland, or former Councilmember Wieland, along with Police Chief Dan Musselman. Congratulations, Dan. But I, I'd like to continue serving on that capacity. Staff cut me off if I'm not supposed to talk about this now, but just I've mentioned that I do serve there and have been going to regular meetings for about a year and a half. And we're doing some good stuff and I'm very excited to report back. But that's one thing I'm involved with. The other thing I'm involved with is the Alliance Group, which I mentioned before, which consists of the city, the county, FUSD, CCC, and NAPDA. And I apologize if someone forgot it, but I think that's all the partners, and NAU. Thank you. And so I've been going to those meetings as well. Aside from that, I've been involved with the Commission of Diversity Awareness. And I'm happy to continue with them. I'm also happy to allow others to, to do that. I'm curious to hear how the discussion continues and what folks want to do. So I'm not necessarily saying that I need to be the one that continues with this group, but that's what I'm doing currently. And I am also a alternate for the NAPDA Board. And I am happy to be a liaison for the NAPDA Board, which is a very active role, as you all can imagine. And I know that for FMPO, it sounds like there's four individuals interested in FMPO. And so I invite any one of you to potentially join me at NAPDA. And if I can make a pitch, NAPDA's working on a lot of great things. There's a lot of things in, in action. And it's a very exciting time and a great team to be a part of. And so if any council members or Vice Mayor, if you wanted to join us, or whoever it might be, please do consider NAPDA. I think that's it from me, for me for now, but I'm really excited about this conversation and appreciate everyone's willingness to jump in. And if anyone wants anything that I'm involved with, please do speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Shimonie. Councilwoman Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. So I am very interested in serving with the NAPDA appointment, also NACOG. And for commissions, BPAC, as well as the Water Commission. Those were my top choices.
All right. Let Ms. Fobar get these all put in there and I'll let you know where, where I'm at.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Sweet, what was the last one? The Water Commission?
I find this very impressive, Ms. Fobar. You're doing a great job getting us down.
Yeah, thank you for keeping us organized. All right. Well, I was going to mention my interest in Metro Plan, but as there is overwhelming interest, I will forego that for the sake of the other council members who might want to be involved in it. I would like to be an alternate for NAPDA. And the Audit Committee. Econa. Then we have the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And on the city commissions, the, I'd like to be on the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living. I was also interested in the diversity awareness, but Councilmember Shimonie, I will leave that to you as for continuity's sake. Aside from that, if we could look down here to see, everything else is pretty well filled on the commission side of things. Could you, could you scroll up, Ms. Fobar, to the top? Just to make sure we've got everything. So yeah, I think now would be a good time. Let's open it up for discussion and see where we want to be at, starting with Metro Plan. We currently have three liaisons and one alternate, and we have four council members who are interested in that position. Would anyone like to offer being the alternate in this circumstance as opposed to the, or one of the primary liaisons?
I would, Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Daggett. I would happily serve as alternate if the other three would like to be the permanent members.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And my apologies, my, I was scrolled up a little high and didn't see that we had a couple of comments here. So Councilmember Aslan and then Mr. Dilly, you'd like to jump in thereafter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know if this is the proper place to introduce this, but I'll just take the opportunity to go ahead and do it. Are, are we in a place where we can officially set up a liaison for the Arizona Corporation Commission? Is, is this an appropriate place for us to introduce that idea and volunteer for the role? Or is that something we need to agendize in another fashion?
I really like that idea, Councilmember Aslan. Maybe City Manager or City Attorney could jump in to let us know if that's something that should be discussed here or at a later time.
Presumably, if we can just do it here, we might as well get it out of the way. But I
Thank you, Mayor. This is Greg Clifton, your City Manager. I am not sure that there is a liaison position there, but I would welcome the opportunity to look into it. And I don't know if anybody else here from staff or with our legal team has knowledge about whether that kind of position exists.
I don't think we currently have an official role. But I would, I would like to propose that we go ahead and codify that.
Mr. Dilly, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. City Manager Clifton, I would, I would view this one probably similar to the Arizona Department of Transportation Liaison where it's, it's not an official capacity on that, with that group. However, we identify that elected official as our chosen spokesperson when it comes to staying in touch with the activity of that, of that commission, as well as champion our, our needs as a community. So that, that's kind of the category where I would see that.
I see it as exactly the same sort of thing. Yeah.
Well, I personally think that's an excellent, excellent idea. And Councilmember Aslan, I think you're a good man for that job. So.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did have, I did have my original question. Can I just, or comment, can I jump to that one real quick?
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, staff does see some overlap between the work of the Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council and the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. And, and it might make sense to have either, either those council members that sit on that coordinate closely or to have it this, one and the same person that, that, that works with both groups for continuity purposes. Just, just a thought that, that hit my chat box from staff. So I wanted to share it with council. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes. We, let's hit on that then. Would Councilmember Aslan or Vice Mayor Daggett be, would either of you like to be on the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association?
You know, I think it might be, if, if I may just jump in, I would like to propose that Vice Mayor Daggett sit on the Municipal Water User Association and also serve as my alternate for the Colorado Plateau. I, I think that makes a certain amount of sense if, if you're willing.
Yes, I had that one highlighted as well. So that, that would work out, that would work out nicely.
Excellent. All right. I'm knocking them away here. Now, let's roll down here. With Economic Collaborative Northern Arizona, this is, this is one I particularly am very interested in and was wondering if Councilwoman Salas, would you be willing to be the alternate on that as, as opposed to the official liaison?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, gladly.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. I'll wait a sec here. So with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, I would, I would be willing to be the alternate on that unless anyone else might want to jump onto there. Okay, sounds good. I'll be the alternate on there. All right. Just make sure I got all everyone's comments here. The Mr. Tetter has a comment on the Self Insurance Trust. Mr. Tetter?
Thank you, Mayor DC. Rick Tetter, Management Services Director. This item is listed here as an option for a liaison. It's not required that we have a liaison from council, but there is an option if council would like to be on this board. Otherwise, it's primarily a staff member and community members. And I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. I was actually was going to be on my first question. So I appreciate it. Could you tell us just a little bit about the Self Insurance Trust Fund Board and what the activities are so that we'll be a little more aware of the activities?
Yes, I could try and chime in on that. And also if Dean Kokenour, our Risk Manager, is available, he can definitely help us with that. This is a group that is intended to review our Self Insurance Trust Fund and report out on the activity, review the claims we've had, and provide that committee review. Unfortunately, we have not had a turnout and enough members from the community to apply for this position. So we haven't really been a very active board in this sense. But hopefully, maybe we can start doing some outreach again and get some people interested in this role. But if, if the Risk Manager is available, he could share additional, or if that's enough. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Senator. I think that gives a general sum up. Do we have any council members who are potentially interested in being a liaison? All right. I think let's leave that one open for now. And, you know, maybe if this, if it does become more active in the future, then we can decide which council member might be fitting for, for that position or just stay involved in other ways. So onward to the Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council. I think that's pretty well set. The Sister Cities for, with Councilmember Salas. I actually just spoke to Sister Cities yesterday, Councilmember Salas, and hearing about the things you're, that are in the works on your behalf. And I, I think that's really great for you to continue on and hopefully makes, make some really good Sister Cities internationally for us. So now the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Executive Committee. Is there a possibility to have that? Oh, Councilmember Shimonie has a comment on the League of Cities.
Thank you, Mayor. But why don't you go ahead and finish your comment? I'm curious to hear your thought.
Oh, I was gonna see if we can have, is there a possibility with this? I know it's a nomination process and application process. Is there a way to have an alternate on this particular board? Or because it is much more external to the city that we, that's not really a, a possibility? If somebody could speak to that. Ms. Drum?
Hi, Jessica Drum, Public Affairs Director. My understanding with this is that the city is only allowed to submit one nomination or one name. And they're, oh, sorry, Sarah, I see that your comment, you have your name up, hand up also. But we're only allowed to submit one name per city. And with that one, obviously, those are open to all cities in the state of Arizona. They're members of the league. And so I think that there is no guarantee that our submission will be elected also, or be selected, I should say. So I don't believe there's any opportunity for an alternate on this one, unfortunately. Sarah, is there anything you can add?
I just, no, I think, I think you wrapped it up nicely there. We can only submit one candidate to the nominating committee and then they will decide if a representative from Flagstaff is included on the executive committee, but there is no guarantee of that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I'll just let you know, one of my main interests in being a part of that executive committee is that I am particularly very interested to advocate for rural broadband, to coordinate our efforts with the cities, to be potentially working towards that mutual goal, also being able to discuss and build the relationships, especially in dealing with climate change and a lot of our actions on that behalf. So I personally am very interested in that position, to be able to advocate on, in those areas in particular, and make the good connections that we need for strong advocacy up the, up the chain of government. But Councilmember Shimonie, did you have a comment?
Right, we're trying to pick.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your comments.
I think that's Councilmember McCarthy, if you could mute. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Shimonie.
So my screen just went black. Okay, I think it, everyone's still here. Okay. This is, you know, I just know this is a huge undertaking. And I do fully trust that, you know, with your judgment on the time commitments, you'd be able to, I know that they're meeting virtually right now and will be meeting in person once we're through COVID. But I, I did have a little bit of concern and I thought a lot about this in terms of how we as a city should best fill this seat. And I guess, you know, considering your reality, and I know that I trust you to consider your reality better than any one of us. And I don't mean for this to come off the wrong way, Mayor, at all. Please don't take this the wrong way. But I know you have, you're busy. You're a busy guy. You're, you're the mayor of the city of Flagstaff. You're working at NAU. You've got a nice, amazing family. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we put thought into this seat just because I know it's a big deal for the, the League of Cities. And, and so I'm glad to hear your enthusiasm for it. I'm glad to hear that there aren't any objections on your end in terms of your own time commitments and ability to serve. You know, I wasn't sure if you were going to bring up any concerns about your own ability here, but I, you know, I know you are part Superman, part human. So anyways, I was just gonna say I do fully support Ms. Salas representing us, if that were to be the will of, of you and, and, you know, whatever the decision-making processes on this application. But I also do support you filling that role, Mayor, if, if you feel like this is not going to be too much for you to take on. And, and I don't mean that just to challenge you to prove me wrong, but, you know, just realizing this, this is a lot. This is all a lot of work that we have. And it's a part, it's a part-time job, right? And so it's, it's, it's pretty, it's tough to do this as a part time gig and really do, you know, do it justice, so to speak. But yeah, I would support you, Mayor, and I would also support Councilmember Salas in this seat. So whatever makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Shimoney. Maybe if staff could just kind of outline the responsibilities, timing, everything else, particularly with the League of Cities and Towns, I'd appreciate it. And city staff. Could you? Yeah, just kind of for myself and council, what is the time commitment in particular with the League of Cities and Towns? In particular with relative to other other committees?
Mayor Deasy, I can I can jump in and just offer a bit of insight. I believe they meet quarterly, so that would kind of give some insight into how often you would be expected to meet. And then the preparation for those meetings, I believe, would be similar to the meetings of any other commission. I believe topics that they discuss include the league budget, policy overview and direction, the annual conference of the league, as well as their strategic plan. And then they also review upcoming ballot measures and hear legal updates that may relate to the city. So those are some of the the issues that fill the agendas. So, yeah, like I said, they do meet quarterly, so I hope that gives at least a little bit of insight on to the into the time commitment that may be involved.
Mayor, just a quick follow up on that, Sarah. And there are sometimes subcommittees, right, that we might be involved with as a city?
I believe so, Councilmember Shimoney, but I could come back to you with more information on that.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you much. I would like to suggest that this this is one I am very interested in. And I'd like to maybe Councilmember Salas, would you like, could we do, for example, maybe I take the alternate on Akona? And you'd be the lead on Akona and potentially myself then with the the League of Cities. Ms. Salas, please come in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I will. I will. I'll consider that that option. One thing that I had in mind in in offering myself to serve the Arizona League of Cities and Towns is that, no, I understand that you you have a very busy schedule and just offering up to to help you out as our mayor and our council. I do understand that the the league has strong advocacy when it comes to local control and home rule. And through the years, the league has been opposing 1487, which preempts local cities and towns from doing specific policies and rules. And then, of course, the opportunity to to work with other cities and towns, not only in Northern Arizona, but other cities and towns that are considered in the rural areas when it comes to policies and funding that will impact our our rural and Northern Arizona citizen towns. So and with that, I would step aside and I will support the nomination to Mayor Policy to be on the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Executive Committee. And I will take the mayor's offer in giving me the the main liaison seat on Akona. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Salas. I really appreciate that. Yeah, those those are my top two I really like is the Akona and Arizona League of Cities. I do. Oh, we have a comment from Ms. Fobar and then a comment from Mr. Fitchett.
My comment will be on the city commissions, so I think Mr. Fitchett should probably go first.
All right, Mr. Fitchett.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just a clarification for Councilmember Shimoney. The league does have subcommittees. And how those are normally structured is there are several of them. For example, former Mayor Evans sat on the Economic Development, Finance and Budget Committee. And essentially, what those subcommittees did was hear ideas for new legislation that the league mayor may determine to support. So that's the general gist for those subcommittees. And I believe those appointments are based on vacancies. And the league reaches out to the current members to see who would fill those. So just a little clarification there for you. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, Ms. Fobar, regarding our city commissions.
Thank you. Identified at our last the last time we did this in 2019 to 2020, Council City Council Liaison Assignments. We identified 11 commissions that we would that council was interested in serving on at this point. And I did want to remind council that they are able to assign a representative to any commission that they wish. We do currently have 26 commissions, so please let us know if there are any that you would like to add to the list. Up on your screen now is a list of all the city Flagstaff boards and commissions. The ones with asterisks currently have a representative assigned to them. Additionally, I did want to point out that the Flagstaff Housing Authority and a couple other have identified liaisons that are required by the authority of the commission. For the Flagstaff Housing Authority, for example, it is the mayor.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Fobar. Councilmember Aslan has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to reach across the table here to Vice Mayor Daggett and for you. You expressed interest in the same two commissions that I serve on, sustainability and open spaces. If you want one of those, I think it makes sense for you to take open space, especially if I'm going to be the ACC rep. I should probably stick with sustainability for now. But again, this is an invitation for conversation, just throwing that out there.
Well, thank you. I would love to take the Open Spaces Commission.
All right. And just a all day Vice Mayor that you're okay with then taking your name off the Sustainability Commission?
Yes.
Great. Just want to clarify. I don't want to. Yeah, overstep. Yeah. Mr. McCarthy has a comment.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I noticed that the Vice Mayor's number one choice was the Housing Commission. And I'm willing to yield to her and let her have that commission. And then I will focus on the transportation issues that we previously have talked about.
Excellent.
This is my lucky day. Thank you.
My pleasure, Becky.
All right. We'll have Councilmember McCarthy on the transportation. Ms. Fobar, if you could scroll down, let's see where we're at. And do we have a single individual for each one of these? Or is there any more that need to be discerned?
It looks like we do have a volunteer for each. Councilmember Salas for the Airport Commission, Councilmember Sweet for Beautification and Public Art, Councilmember Shimoney for the Commission on Diversity Awareness, Mayor Deasy for the Inclusion and Adaptive Living Commission, Vice Mayor Daggett for the Housing Commission and the Open Space Commission, Councilmember Salas for Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Aslan for Sustainability, Councilmember Salas for Tourism, Councilmember McCarthy for Transportation and Councilmember Sweet for the Water Commission.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shimoney has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so just in regards to the commissions. Mayor, I'm totally happy to allow you to be the liaison, and I can almost back you up on the Diversity Awareness Commission. I actually would like to attend the Indigenous Commissions and really be involved with that group. And and so if you were into that, I'm into that. I'm also hoping to be more involved with other commissions that aren't on this list. And kind of almost do like a tour of commissions and just kind of engage as much as I can without burning myself out too much. And then I'm also hoping, once we have a youth commission established, happy for other other individuals to step up. But if not, I'm happy to, you know, I feel passionate about engaging with that population as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Not to not to add more to your plate, Mayor, but yeah, I know that you were interested in too. And I welcome you to engage with that group if you wanted to.
Thank you. For any of these, we can have an alternate, correct?
Yes, we can. It's not necessary, but of course, we can always have an alternate.
Okay, well, Councilmember Shimoney, if you wouldn't mind being my alternate on that, that would be great. I do. I'm very interested in the diversity awareness, particularly around our deaf and hard of hearing community, our blind community that I'm involved with and would like to help advocate for in the city. So that was my main reason for the Diversity Awareness Commission. Yes, Councilmember.
Add one more thing. The Diversity Awareness Commission did present a survey that they put out to the community a couple of months ago or a few months ago. Maybe that survey can get emails to council. Mayor, I think you especially might appreciate that. And everyone else on council, I'm sure will too. But it was a great survey that that commission worked very hard on over the past years.
Excellent. Thanks for letting us know, Councilmember. Ms. Fobar.
Two of the council, the commission members from the diverse Commission on Diversity Awareness, pardon me, will be presenting to council next month on the survey findings.
Okay, great. Excellent. Well, if we could just was there any other commissions that any council member might be interested in being on that is not on this particular list that we've already gone through? Councilmember Shimoney.
Mayor and Council, I really apologize for for jumping in like this, like keep going back and forth. But I just wanted to add, just in closing, not commission related, but going back up to just the League of Cities. I know Councilmember Salas has been involved and has been, you know, very engaged with what the league is working on. Mayor, maybe to your credit, you've been involved and are aware of what they're working on and the city's been working on. But maybe you haven't, just because you and the new council are somewhat new to the scene. I just wonder if Councilmember Salas can almost not maybe maybe not be an alternate, but just kind of be a shadow and Salas, Ms. Salas, I'm not trying to volunteer for something you don't want to do, but I do see value in your historical understanding, Ms. Salas, of of what the city has been advocating for. And I could see being a huge help to Mayor Deasy in kind of helping Mayor Deasy, you know, you know, understand some of the historical work that's been done on behalf of the city in the League of Cities. Just a comment and just a thought, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Shimoney for that thought. First of all, I think the the nomi we are nominating nominating our mayor to be included in the candidates for the Executive Committee. And it's still up to the selection committee of the League of Cities and Towns to select our mayor. So even we if we nominate our mayor, that does not guarantee us a seat on the Executive Committee. I would be interested. And of course, I would rely on on staff in terms of availability on subcommittees on the league, especially when it comes to to economic development and and policies. Of course, advocating not only for Flagstaff, but for Northern Arizona and rural cities and towns in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Can anyone on city staff speak to that and potential for being involved in subcommittees by Councilwoman Salas? If that is an option or?
Hello, Mayor Deasy. This is Sarah Langley, Management Analyst. My colleague, Jack Fitchett, may jump in as well, but I believe that members who serve on or that those who serve on subcommittees need to first be a member of the Executive Committee. And then they volunteer for those subcommittee seats. So Jack can confirm that. And I also wanted to note that this is, of course, not the only means for interaction with the league that the council will have. There are a lot of update calls that they have periodically. And also, as we will be presenting to you on January 12th, we will be organizing some sort of lobbying effort in which council members will interact directly with our elected representatives. So serving on the Executive Committee is definitely not the only means to to lobby for for the interests of Flagstaff. So just wanted to to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Mr. Dilly has a comment. Deputy City Manager, did you have a comment?
I did. I was talking to myself, Mayor. And it wasn't going very well. Anyway, Mayor, Mayor Deasy, thank you. I just wanted to echo what Sarah just said. In order, it's been my understanding that those serving on subcommittees are are chosen from the from the Executive Committee itself. So I do believe that's where they pull that and they break out to do the subwork necessary to bring forward recommendations to the Executive Committee as a whole to to take final action on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dilly. All right, well, I'd like to wrap this up, but wanted to see if there's any other comments from council, any other commissions that we might be, one of you might be interested in being the official liaison for Councilmember McCarthy.
I just request to Stacy, she probably planned to do this already. But would you send that list that you've created out to the whole council? Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Well, without further ado, this might be a good little stopping point to take a 10 minute break. It is 4:48. Let's just say let's meet all up here at 5 o'clock and move on with the agenda. Sound good? All right, well, let's get started here. Regardless, we are now down to item number eight on our agenda, which is the discussion regarding a policy of a deferral of any new or increased fees until after the global pandemic is over as set forth by the CDC. I believe this was brought forth by Councilmember Salas. Would you like to introduce it introduce and begin the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I put forth this this idea in the fair process. And it received the support from three council members in of the previous councils. So now it's up for discussion and potential direction. My intent in in coming up with the idea of deferment is, you know, putting off any collection of new or increased fees until after the global pandemic is over, set forth by the Center for Disease and Center for Disease Control. And in fact, Center for Infectious Disease and Control, you know, the federal government, that the federal agency that sets for the, you know, where we are in terms of the global pandemic. So this does not mean that we are not going to collect the new fees or increased fees, but we're just going to put it off at a later date. but we're just going to put it off at a later date. Especially we're in a period where a lot of our residents are pinching, you know, trying to cut down as much expense as possible, I mean, including myself. Now, if we have to worry about increasing in water fee or increasing trash collection or solid waste, you know, everything adds up. So I'm really concerned about the, how our residents really struggling financially, including myself. So that's why I put forth this idea. Also, the city has, for this purposes, has deferred paying, deferred collecting fees related to downtown businesses that have expanded their service. You know, we have, we have this effort in revitalizing downtown businesses, and we have closed off a portion of our streets to allow for physically and socially distanced food service and rental service. And I believe the city has deferred payment of any applicable fees for those businesses. So, yeah, and thank you for allowing this discussion to take place.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Aslan has a clarifying question before we move to public comment. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this question is best suited for you, Mrs. Fobar. Can you remind us who the three councilmembers were that moved this forward?
Unfortunately, Councilmember Aslan, I'm going to need just a few minutes to find that.
I'm sorry. I should have asked that in the comments a couple of minutes ago to give you a heads up. Just realizing that now. Well, if, we don't need to stall as we wait for that, but I would be eager to get that information eventually.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Let's move on to the three public comments that we have now, and then we'll circle back hopefully with the discussion. Ms. Fobar, we have our public comments. Do you have them on the line?
Jason, are you set?
I have Steve Finch on the line, starting public comment now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff. I'm Steve Finch with the Northern Arizona Lodging, Tourism and Restaurant Association. We just want to let you know that we appreciate this conversation about a freeze on any new or increased fee you'd be looking at. You know, as the city revenue has seen the lack of funds coming in from businesses to the city has indicated, you know, the economic stability of our, you know, our economy of the city right now. Because of that, you know, we appreciate this conversation. We also appreciate the cost-saving measures the city has taken to reduce their overhead, to be more in line with revenue that is coming in versus running our city into a debt. It is appreciated that we're using an outside indicator, we're considering it, to determine when a fee increase could be reconsidered. However, simply looking at the CDC for a green light, the economy is good, is not enough to ensure, you know, that we should be looking at a fee increase or any new fees. Because simply because they're saying the green light, the pandemic is over, doesn't mean tourism, businesses are all going to return to a standard way of doing business. It's going to take time. What we would like to see is a couple of indicators used before we make that determination. Like I said, the CDC alone is not enough. We would also like to have the city, you know, monitor, again, which you do, the revenue that's coming in to wait for it to come back to a historic standard for where it should be for that particular time of year. Because again, the financial returning to normalcy by itself could be a false indicator. But we tie the two together, we think the city would have a much stronger stance on when fees could be considered to be increased or additional fees on our residents. We must, you know, got to realize the city revenue is going to take time for businesses to recover. Simply because if tourism comes back, this is a return to some kind of a normalcy, doesn't mean they're running financially solid, because they've been running at a loss. They've been expending fund reserves, or even some have been surviving on loans. We need to give the businesses and the economy, the locals, a chance to recover. In short, we don't want to rush any move for increasing fees, new fees, until our city, our economy has had a chance to come back to some kind of a normalcy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. And that was perfectly at three minutes, so I appreciate that as my first public participant. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Finch? All right, well.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, couldn't type so fast. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Finch. He's Councilmember Salas.
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
Mr. Finch, are you still on the line?
I am.
Yeah, you had mentioned that you represent the Lodging, Tourism, Restaurant Association.
Correct.
Were you speaking on behalf of your association?
Right. I had a conversation earlier today to confirm with some of my key board members on this exact topic, just to make sure there was nothing else they wanted to have included in this discussion.
So do you, would you, would your organization or association support, you know, a potential policy of deferment of any new or increased fees until after the global pandemic is over?
Correct. I mean, we do want to see no fees or increase until after the pandemic. But we also, in addition, would like to see the financials of the city revenue coming in, which would be the secondary indicator that tourism and businesses have actually returned to some kind of normalcy. You know, as Councilmember McCarthy and I had a conversation this weekend, and thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy, for your time that you provided me for that conversation. You know, we're just seeing a lot of issues here, and we just got to make sure our city is solid. You know, I'm not saying what Mr. McCarthy said, this is simply my side of this conversation. That we just got to make sure, you know, we're solid before we go out there and look for any increase in fees or, you know, any new fees that might be incurred on our locals or our businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Finch, and appreciate you speaking up. I understand, you know, your sector, the tourism sector, is the hardest hit by the pandemic as is reflected in our BBB revenue collection, so just in this year. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Finch from council? I'm not seeing any, so let's move on to the next public participant. Mr. Cook, do you have an individual on the line?
Mr. Galley, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. And City Council and City Staff, Joe Galley, 101 West Route 66. I'm Senior Advisor for Public Policy at the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. Greetings to you this evening, and we'd like to thank Councilwoman Salas for putting this into motion where it's in front of you, for previous council folks who have supported it. We're supportive at the chamber. We're grateful for your consideration. We think adopting something of this nature, in whatever form it comes forward for approval, sends a good, strong message to the business community at a time when the business community needs it, and certainly at a calendar, start the new year off on the right foot. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galley. Do we have any questions from council?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I understand we have one more public participation. Do we have the individual on the line?
Yes. I have Scott Talboom. Your three minutes start now.
Yes. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and start. Everybody ready?
We're good to go.
Okay. So, Mayor, DC City Council members and staff, I wanted to speak on behalf of Agenda Item Number Eight, which addresses the idea of deferring new fees and increases until the economic harm caused by the pandemic subsides. I understand that there is little that the city can do to help individuals and businesses impacted by business closures, job losses, and an overall slowdown in the economy. However, this gesture would certainly be helpful. So I support it wholeheartedly unless there's an obvious negative impact on the services provided by the city. I also urge you to continue to work towards opening the city completely as soon as possible to avoid further damage to our economy and our citizens' livelihoods. The end.
Thank you, Mr. Talboom. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Talboom? All right. I'm currently not seeing anything. Just to verify, that was our last public comment? Ms. Fobar?
Yes, it was, Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, we, I see also that you were able to find that information to address Councilmember Aslan's question. Could you please let us know, and then I'll move on for a question from Miss Salas?
Perfect. Councilmember Aslan, the people, councilmembers who supported the fair item previously were Mayor Evans, Councilmember Whelan, and Councilmember Odegaard.
All right. Thank you. Well, Councilwoman Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to have an uninformed and data, database discussion, I have taken upon myself to ask staff to come up with some projections in the next two years in terms of projected revenue on new and increased fees. And I believe staff is ready to provide that information.
Thank you. Spears, Mr. Tatter, could you please, yeah, give us the information?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Again, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer for the city. Today, I threw together a quick presentation to kind of walk through some points and for this discussion today. And hopefully, this helps Ms. Salas's request for information. And we'll go through these slides and feel free to ask any questions. So just to frame the conversation of what staff sees as far as changes or increase in new fees or such. In order to have a rate change or to create a new fee, this is required through an adoption by City Council. It does require a first and second read, as well as a 30-day period, for those to become an effect. So just framing kind of what it takes to have a fee. So council does have the power and the final decision of whether we're going to increase a fee, if it does come to council. Not saying that we are, but. And until a new ordinance is adopted related to current fees, I believe the city will still have to charge on those fees until those adoption and changes are made. And there's two on the, in the near future that we already have approved by council for adoption. So these are not really new fees or increases, but they were already planned and adopted by council. The solid waste has some fee increases, and we'll talk about those on the next slide, going into effect January 1st. And the development fees recently had approval by council and adoption, and those go effect in January 17th. And just any new or future increases not approved right now would need a public process to go through, as well as your council direction and adoption for consideration. So that's just framing on how we get our fees adopted and changed. So a question came up as far as what are some impacts that we would see if we forego some of the increases we already have in place? And I've put together, I've worked with quite a few staff in the city, several public work staff, community development staff, and economic vitality staff to kind of bring some thoughts and numbers to these considerations. And I thank them for their work. So solid waste currently has a rate increase for January 1st, 2020. Our customer service staff, our revenue staff, is already implementing those in our utility billing system at this time. So a lot of work is being done already to maintain that schedule. 7.5% increase is scheduled currently for residential collection and for curbside glass collection. As we calculated that, and you know, we brought this fee to council a while back, should we forego a seven and a half percent increase, the annual impact to the solid waste fund would be about $367,000 on an annual basis. A monthly basis is about $31,000 a month. Another fee that's currently adopted and going into effect in the future on January 17th of 2021 is our development fees that were approved and adopted by council. And I've done some, our great people in community development, Tiffany Antal and them, have done some kind of calculations as far as what we see as a revenue impact if we don't continue on with the development fee implementation that was approved by council. And again, these are high-level numbers. It really depends on the building community, what permits are pulled, and what types of construction is being done. So these are just kind of ballpark areas based residential on the last four years of average permits. We could see about $783,000 in less revenues in that area for our commercial businesses, just based on a 410,000 square feet, which was an average from a couple of years ago, about $284,000 in development fee loss by changing or delaying that implementation. So those are fees that are currently in place for a future increase. And just wanted to share about some other rate increases that, or fee changes that are in the pipeline. At our airport, we have a airport storage fee that was planned on having an increase on July 1st, 2021. That brings about $18,000 into our airport fund, our enterprise fund, as we have it. And the other item that's been in council's discussion over the last year is the new construction of a parking lot and the implementation of paid parking. Part of this plan and the way to fund the paid parking, the new lot development was through paid parking fees. These fees would not start, of course, until we get the new lot in place and council adopts a fee for our parking program. The last estimates for that would be about $650,000 to $700,000 to the airport to pay debt service and operating costs, and really help support the airport to become a more self-reliant enterprise fund in the long run. And I threw on here Park Flag, our downtown parking area. And I wasn't sure if the council request would be to continue this on, but I thought just to highlight this one, as we did in the retreat the other day, is that one's due to is that one's due to be suspended or to be reenacted on May 1st of this year. But I'm not sure if council was looking to extend that as part of this no-fee increase. And I just wanted to kind of frame also what staff understands, and maybe council would understand as far as what we're not considering as fees, just to put some context to that. We have fire protection contracts, which are those for properties outside of the city flagstaff. We do those calculations annually, and those are for those property owners to, to voluntarily sign up for fire protection contracts. We have several intergovernmental agreements, also known as IGAs, in place already. Some of those may have increases or changes in the coming couple of years. But those are not our intention to change. We have several leases in places for city properties. We're not really considering those new fees, but we do have planned increases to our lease contracts as they have been approved for a council. Court-approved fees are generally something we don't have a control over, so those would not be something we would look at. Property taxes, we have a primary and secondary property taxes, and that's council's decision to adopt as part of the budget process, and we'll talk about those through that. And we would adopt those in June for any consideration of changes in those rates at that point. And also, the county adopts the library secondary property tax, so there's less control on that item. And also, the flagstaff housing authority does have some contracts and rentals and so forth, but they're bound to certain requirements as HUD would require in those areas. So I just wanted to frame the, the things that we're not considering as staff. And so with that, that's just kind of framing our conversation and what we've learned over the last couple hours or last couple days, as far as what we have in the future. And I also wanted to just share a comment for about our utility billing, our revenue section is not currently actively turning off customers' accounts during this pandemic. We are trying to work our best with customers. We are not turning off for non-pay, but we're trying to work with them for payment plans and helping them get the assistance they need for our municipal services. And that's all I have for this presentation, and I will turn it back for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. We have two questions, starting with Ms. Sweet and then Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Tatter. In regards to Park Flag, can I get clarification? Is it currently suspended until March 1st or May 1st? I have heard both dates.
Oh, boy, did I get it wrong again. I believe it's May 1st, but not sure if Dave McIntyre is available to confirm that.
Rick Tatter, this is Greg Clifton. It may be March 1st, but allow us to confirm because of the confusion, and we'll circle back.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
All right. Vice Mayor Daggett, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Can you go back right there, that, that slide? Do you have it broken out what the impact of the solid waste fee would be for individual households?
No, I'm, I'm not, I don't have that schedule available. That is in our city code, and it was part of the adoption, but we do have Todd Hanson available, and maybe he has the rates available for residential customers.
I do. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Todd Hanson, Solid Waste Director. So this first, the increase that we're talking about this January would be $1.54 for trash and recycle service, and $0.31 increase for the glass recycling service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Aslan, do you have a further question on this?
No, but I can, I can make a comment. I'm not sure if we're turning this inward yet. But I, I would like to point out, thank you for that information, Mr. Hanson. I do find this problematic. I think, I think we're looking at alleviating a $1.54 burden for the individual at the expense of a third of a million dollars for the city. And I'm sure we could rewrite that equation for each one of these line items. I, I do not think that it's advisable at this time for us to have a moratorium or, I'm sorry, I'm not, I think we're not supposed to use the word moratorium, if I'm remembering the city attorney correctly, a, a deferral right now. I just don't think it makes sense, but I can speak more to that later. I'm getting a little ahead of myself, I think.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Tatter. So, Mr. Tatter, just playing out the scenario, if council were to adopt the fair item regarding a deferral of any new increased fees until after the global pandemic is over, that doesn't, that doesn't relate to anything you just presented on. You just talked about a lot of different things, and, and, you know, council could go and undo some of those efforts, but not, that's not really what's being discussed tonight in terms of the deferral. Am I correct?
So I wasn't sure how the conversation was going to be framed as far as what is considered a future increase. At this point in time, is that considered a future increase? So I, I thought just to at least share that information, if that was the dialogue council was going to have. But really, we, we are looking for your direction on this, of what that would mean.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter, and Mayor, I'll save my comments till our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor DC, and Mayor and Council, just to, you know, confirm as Councilmember Aslan indicated, yes, the correct language is a deferral, and that, that is what we're considering here. We're staying away from other operative terms of art that are in the development statutes of the state that aren't included in the agenda posting tonight, and deferral is the, the word that we're using. Thank you.
And I guess one of, I have a question before I turn it inward here with council. If council decided to proceed with this, is there a potential that some of our government projects or things that we already have queued up may be delayed? Or not just on the revenue in, but the revenue out? How, how might this affect potentially seeing projects move forward or the ability to continue to provide the services?
Mayor DC, we have not done the full extent of, of what this impact would be, because we're really not clear on what the direction is intended to be and, and what revenues would be if we would, you know, not do these increases and not do the storage, airport storage fee and so forth. So we'll need a little more direction to understand this fair item. But, you know, with, with direction the council has, it always comes down to we have to bring fees to your attention for adoption, and it does require a public process. I believe the direction would be, we just would not bring those forward if we were planning any over the next year or so. And the, the other side of it is we would go through the budget process this year, understanding that. We would look at the revenues of any plans that may have had a fee increase considered in the next 12 to 24 months, and we would look to see how we balance that and what projects may be impacted from that. But, but really, we need a little more understanding of council's direction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tatter. Mr. Hanson, if you could speak to regards to solid waste? Oh, hold on, sorry, one moment. City Attorney, would, do you need to jump in here?
Yes, real quick, I forgot to mention when I was speaking before. Thank you, Mayor, and council. Specific to Councilmember Shimoney's question, and, and the way you worded it, Councilmember Shimoney, was if we were to adopt this deferral tonight, there is no voting happening tonight. We're in a work session. It would simply be direction from council to go, for staff to go forward. And as Mr. Tatter was just indicating, the direction, we would need something more specific as to what council is considering deferring. I, I think that needs to be very clear for staff, and I'll defer to City Manager Clifton on that.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, would you like to chime in?
I will just confirm what was just stated, yeah, that we're just seeking direction tonight. No action to be taken, and we come back to you with an ordinance with, you know, and that would incorporate the specifics that hopefully come out of this conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Hanson, my apologies. Go ahead.
No problem. There are some things that we would have to consider, as with any enterprise fund. If the revenues get reduced, there would be some service or project reductions. You know, just a couple of them that possibly come to mind would be the volumetric pricing pilot, and maybe the food waste and composting pilot that we're going to do this year might have to get deferred so we can just depend on our core services that we provide. In addition, there might be some landfill capital projects that are going on at the moment, which might need to be deferred, which could be problematic.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. I guess the, as the, one of, another question I might have for Mr. Tatter. Regarding the water, that we're not turning off anyone's water right now, I'm just wondering, how, how much is in arrears right now for individuals with the water compared to years prior? Are we seeing a, a large issue here with those fees, or if you could just speak a little to that?
Yeah, I don't have that number available, but we can definitely look that up for you. We do have a few customers that have not contacted us for a payment plan. And the, the dollar value of those accounts is about 70,000 over several accounts. I believe it's about 30 to 50 accounts that are not being paid and haven't contacted us for a payment plan. Most customers have done that and reached out to us and said, hey, we're doing our best. We're gonna, let's do a payment plan and let's get this figured out, so. But I do not have the total arrears at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, if, unless we have any more questions for our city staff, then I think it would be good to move on to discussion. And it doesn't appear we do. So I'll open up the floor, council, for this discussion and see where we go. And I will save my comments for the end. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, philosophically, for as long as I can remember, we've had an attitude that enterprise funds in particular, and all funds in general, that they're break even. With, the idea is that we don't make a profit, but we don't subsidize them. So it seems that if we reverse ourselves on decisions that were made in the previous council, then we're abandoning that long-held tradition of breaking even, you know, no profit, no loss. And I find that problematic. I, I think the intentions of this measure are excellent, but I think that in effect, we either have to dramatically or significantly reduce services or we would have to subsidize those funds with monies from somewhere else, which is completely contrary to at least the tradition that council has had since long before I was on council. So I have some problems with this measure and some serious concerns about it. It seems like a lot of work. We're going to have to go back and pass an ordinance that would undo an ordinance that we already passed, and then sometime in the future, pass the ordinance again. And it's a lot of work for staff, and it's a lot of input required from the public, and just a lot of busy work, and I think the, the benefits will be pretty minor. I think we should definitely refrain from, you know, adding any new fees in the future, or at least if we have to, be very, very careful about it. But to go back and undo what we already did, I find that to be busy work and problematic. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll go to Vice Mayor Daggett, followed by Councilmember Shimoney, and then on to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo what Councilmember McCarthy said, and I don't believe that this is an effective way to get at, I think, the underlying sentiment that was involved with bringing up this question. And this isn't something, given the information that's been presented to us, that I would be interested in supporting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Ms. Solis, for bringing this forward to us and the public speakers. I, I agree with my colleagues that have spoken so far. I, I think that this is problematic if we were to go down this road. Definitely, I do appreciate the process that we currently have in place for how new fees are adopted, and I believe that the fees that have been adopted are appropriate and are, are good, and are what we need to thrive as a community and as a city. I have concerns about the definition of a global pandemic and, and just, you know, the whole idea of putting just this big halt when, A, there's nothing in the pipeline that we're looking to consider, and B, there's a public process to it, and us, as an elected body, can make a choice in real time as to what's appropriate and what's not. So I just have issues with us preemptively, you know, almost stripping us of our local control. And I'm, Ms. Solis won't appreciate that comment, but, you know, it's, I, I think it'd be good for us to remain flexible and, and, and support the fees that are currently in place. I think all have good purposes and reasons. So those are my thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan, followed by Councilmember Sweet, and then to Councilmember Solis.
Thank you. So not to pile on or belabor the point, but I find myself in agreement with those who have spoken already, and I hinted at my, my thoughts on this a little bit. You know, we're, we're all hurting, and I acknowledge and applaud Councilmember Solis for looking for ways to help. But ultimately, I think this is the wrong Band-Aid for the larger body element that we're dancing around here. And also, it comes with unintended deleterious side effects. So I think it's not indicated at this time for us to do this. You know, my other big problem with it is the, the fuzziness of the timeline. We don't have, we, we don't have a calendar date upon which this would, this deferral would sunset, right? And the definition of the global pandemic and the economic downturn are generally something we're all looking forward to seeing the end of. But even when we're in those moments, there's going to be a lot of disagreement and debate about when we've crossed that threshold and are safely on the other side. It's, I think it's going to be a phase out, and it's going to last a while. And I don't think our city resources can take that level of hit for that long when the benefit to the individual payer is so dispersed. So, you know, and, and Um, so, uh, you know, and, and I think the, the additional thing to keep in mind is we can still consider, um, not implementing fee increases on an individual basis as it comes before council, and, uh, we will have the additional, uh, information of future knowledge about what the landscape is looking like at those times when we, when we have those discussions. And I think that suffices, um, for our ability to protect our ratepayers and also continue the services that everybody needs to see, and, um, honor the commitments that we've made through previous development fee increases and actions by council, um, for the things that are coming down the pipe. Um, and also, I, I, I am concerned about the, the amount of staff time that would go into this. Just to bring it back before council, uh, to further this conversation, it seems to me that it's appropriate that we just end the, the, the concept here tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilwoman Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to thank Councilmember Solis for bringing this forward. And I do acknowledge that we need to show support for our community and businesses. But I do agree that the benefit, benefits are minor, and I would like to, you know, entertain future discussions as they come about, but for right now, I, I do agree that we, um, can end this tonight. But I appreciate Ms. Solis for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Solis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, Vice Mayor Daggett, and, and my colleagues on council for allowing this discussion to happen. You know, I, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We're in a recession. We are on a recession plan as a city right now. We're, you know, we're, uh, at about ten percent, uh, in terms of, um, uh, reduction in revenues. Um, I, I do, um, you know, uh, feel and, uh, for a lot of members of our communities and close friends of mine who are now facing eviction or cannot pay mortgage, have gone to the, the food bank for food, for, um, for their kids. Um, you know, you know, with the solid waste, it's, it's, you know, it, it, a dollar fifty, four, three dollars, it's five dollars. You know, that's two gallons of milk. Um, and for our, our small businesses, a lot of them, some of them have closed already, and a lot of them are, are facing the possibility of closure. So, um, this was my way of, uh, you know, um, uh, impacting some kind of, some kind of, uh, reprieve, um, to increasing cost of living and doing business in Flagstaff. I do understand that, you know, I'm just one voice, but I will have that voice be heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Solis. I'll, uh, chime in here. I really, uh, appreciate this being put forth and that we are, uh, it's important for our community, just like our, uh, water fees have been offered, and we're working, uh, the city staff is working with the individual customers. Um, I think this, it's extremely important to be able to defer amidst a, a crisis situation. Uh, I personally think that this could be done more administratively, uh, in a more efficient manner than, uh, having us go through the process of an ordinance read, second read, thirty days, um, that came, similar to our residential, can, uh, city staff maybe, uh, allow for some of these deferrals, work with the business owners and so forth, to inevitably have the same effect, which is, hey, we don't need to have this new fee due today on the dollar amount. Um, can, is this process, uh, I guess this question would be for city staff, is this process, uh, already in the works for other things other than just water? Or, uh, we, could we have a process where people have that deferment and work with them for these other types of fees?
Um, the, just, just to clarify, the water, the municipal bill fees are not necessarily deferred. We are just, we're billing customers as, as we should for the services they're providing. We're just not taking the action to terminate accounts for non-pay, uh, trying to work with customers to make sure their water stays on, uh, in that practice. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that, uh, comment. Um.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's a very good question that you raised. But I do think, uh, at least in, in recent times with the pandemic, we have, uh, staff has consulted council on questions like this. The best example that comes to my mind would be the rent abatement at the airport, and perhaps a number of other, uh, similar programs. Um, it, you know, as Rick just pointed out, Rick Tatter, we, we might be able to, uh, delay enforcement actions while not necessarily deferring payments. That, that's the point that was just made. Uh, but I think even in that realm, uh, we, we would have a discomfort doing that without some council direction. I understand and appreciate the desire to avoid a, uh, long and, and complex, uh, ordinance process. Um, and I'm not trying to suggest our hands are tied without that ordinance, but I do think at the very least, uh, we would feel more comfortable getting council direction. And if we're advised, uh, that an ordinance is required, you know, we, that there may be ways to expedite the ordinance process. Um, you know, an emergency ordinance could be read in, in one reading, things like that. Our attorney can advise us on that. I think what I'm trying to, uh, illustrate here or, or emphasize is, um, we, we seek council direction on this because it's so very important to have that direction. These are very important questions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, uh, City Attorney?
Yes, I appreciate that. I, I, I will, um, just, you know, following up on what City Manager Clifton has just indicated. Uh, it becomes very, uh, difficult for, for staff to simply administratively, uh, officially defer. I would recommend an ordinance for that. I won't go into the legalities of it here. That would be more for executive session. But, uh, to put it very briefly, uh, I think it would require council, uh, direction at the very least, and likely an ordinance.
Okay, that wouldn't deter, for example, setting up payment plans with businesses and something that affect as opposed to a more formal deferral, but just, um, you know, having city staff work with these individual businesses, residences, uh, to, um, be able to work with the payment plan amidst the, the economic issues that we're, we're facing now.
You know, Greg, Rick, jump in, uh, to let me know, but I believe that already occurs.
Yeah, I believe that's what, uh, Mr. Tatter was making reference to, um, payment plans. Uh, so we really are, um, taking the kind of a, uh, relaxed enforcement on some of the utility billings. Uh, but also, as Mr. Tatter pointed out, uh, it's easier to do that when we have, uh, plans in place to, to work with our customers so that we can recoup those, uh, fees at a later time. Rick, is there something you would like to add to what I just said?
Uh, yeah, um, we, we do allow payment plans for municipal bills. Uh, that is the one area that we do have that, uh, control and collection process. Uh, it may be a little different when you come into development fees as well as, um, community development fees and so forth, that, um, we can't really for sake of gifting and providing a different financing package for some of the fees that we collect. And, and we really want to make sure that, uh, community development fees are paid before, uh, permits are issued. Uh, it's a lot harder to pick up and get those revenues after the fact. Uh, so it, it may vary by areas, but, um, municipal bills, we definitely have that opportunity, even with commercial customers and, uh, residential.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just, uh, at the, no, uh, Ms. Antal just mentioned development fees are required at the time of permit issuance by statute. Um, well, council, uh, do we have any further comments? I appreciate this discussion. Uh, it does not seem we have, uh, a, a majority to move this discussion forward, for a direction of council, direction of staff. All right, um, we are down to agenda item nine. Uh, that is the discussion and possible direction regarding the upcoming end of the eviction moratorium. Um, I will start off just kind of explaining, since I, uh, had last week requested, uh, uh, City Manager to place this on our agenda for this week due to the seemingly emergent, uh, situation December thirty first, that, uh, the eviction moratorium was going to be lifted. Uh, at this time with the federal government reinstating that, um, well, I guess we'll get in that in a minute, but, uh, was mainly wanting to bring this up for, uh, given that it's an emergent, seemingly emergent situation at the time. Uh, but we do have one public comment, so let, let me take that first before we, uh, yeah, continue with the discussion. So, Ms. Fobar.
I have Tyler Denham. Uh, you climb stairs now.
Hi. I, I wish I had some bright ideas to share with the city council on what to do about the upcoming wave of evictions, but I, I don't. At this point in time, a massive amount of human suffering seems unavoidable. Instead, all I can do is point out how the scale of this crisis is a direct result of the city council's negligence. For several decades, city council refused to responsibly manage housing supply, prioritizing a minority's concerns about property values over the needs of the majority. This resulted in a situation where thousands of Flagstaff residents were housing cost burdened. COVID would be a gut punch regardless, but if not for the underlying housing issue, the scale of evictions Flagstaff is facing would have been greatly reduced. It's, it, it's like forced management. If you refuse to manage a forest properly by allowing underbrush and fuel to accumulate, eventually, a spark is going to set off an uncontrollable wildfire. In this case, COVID was the spark, and the fuel was decades of restrictions on housing supply. City council must learn from its mistakes to avoid future human suffering. And I, I know a lot of the council members are new, Councilmember Daggett, Councilmember Sweet. So it feels odd to talk about mistakes of the city council. And, and your case in particular, I, I just urge you to be politically brave. You've been handed a nigh impossible situation, and the urge, the pressure is gonna be to kick the can down the road. But as we see today, that can only go so far. The decisions you make today may have serious ramifications for the future. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denham. Council, do we have any, uh, questions? All right, well then, I will, uh, wrap up in our, uh, public comment section of this. So, I guess I'll, I'll start off, since I was the one who, uh, brought this forward. Uh, given this emergent situation December thirty first, which it does appear now it is going to be picked to January. Um, and after, in discussions this last week regarding, uh, what plans are being done through Flagstaff Shelter Services, the county, and any, many others, um, I, I think that we are on a decent path now and, um, would like to, let's open up the discussion for council. Um, the other part I wanted to bring this up for is, hopefully, if City Attorney could jump in to, to just explain what our role as a city council is, or the city is in the eviction process, so that we can better explain to us and to the public what we actually can do, uh, particularly about evictions. City Attorney, would you, would you be able to speak to that?
I can very briefly. Uh, there's, uh, quite a bit of legal advice that would, uh, be involved in getting in-depth, but I will state very generally that evictions are governed, uh, both under state and federal law. And, uh, that's not something that the city can be involved in on a local level. We're preempted. And, uh, that, that was the case prior to COVID. Uh, I, I can't, uh, really go into any more detail than that, uh, here in open meeting, but, uh, if the council wants additional information, uh, you know, executive session is always a possibility. Um, I wasn't, uh, anticipating that here today. If you'd like to have an executive session on that in the future, uh, we can do that. Or I, I could do it very generally, uh, in executive session today, but more specific than I've stated here. Short story is, it's, uh, a matter governed by state law and has been declared a, a matter of statewide concern under state law. As a result, we're preempted as a city.
Uh, thank you, City Attorney. Uh, unless otherwise noted by a council member, I don't feel there's a necessity at this point to go into executive, uh, session regarding this, but I wanted, appreciate the, um, you, City Attorney, for, um, yeah, informing of this more generally. I would like to open it up to discussion from other council members regarding this issue. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start us off. Um, thank you, first of all, for bringing this to our attention, and thank you, City Manager, for putting it on the agenda in a very timely manner. Uh, this was a very time-sensitive subject up until, what, yesterday? When we got to kick the can down the road a month, right, basically? And this is a huge, huge wave, as Devon McCloslin says, that is coming towards us, and it's, it's devastating, right? And, and I, and I don't know what we can do locally, and, and, and Mayor, I too have been trying to figure out what we can do locally. Um, I'm thinking, you know, at minimum, send a letter to the state, you know, and to all the different bodies at the state level that, uh, need to hear our support for them taking leadership and keeping people in housing, and continue to, to put the pressure on the states. Um, and it just, this whole conversation and just the topic of people struggling, um, obviously is rooted in COVID and also in housing, but in, in work, right? A lot of people have been furloughed, a lot of people have been laid off, a lot of people, like we've heard earlier, can't, don't have work because of the lack of tourism. Um, and, and at our, and I wanted to mention this for the new council and the new mayor. At our last joint meeting with the chamber, we heard a lot about, like, the, I, I wanna say it was the chamber, that we heard a lot about, um, customer shopping culture changing and, and customers being afraid to shop because of safety concerns, because of COVID. And so we had asked the chamber very clearly to help us really push the mask ordinance and, and ask their businesses to help with the compliance and lead by example. And, and as soon as we got everyone wearing a mask, you know, social distancing, I feel like I have like a broken record here, you know? Um, doing these things to protect our community, um, the sooner we can get back to business, I don't wanna say business as usual, because that's, that's changed forever. Um, I also think that the, the vaccine rolling out is going to be, um, something that helps our community, but I, I agree with the speaker who, who spoke to us, Tyler, in, in the sense that how do we dig ourselves out of this? Um, it's gonna be tough. So I'm open ears to anyone's comments. If Ms. Dar or anyone from the city or any community partners have any thoughts, um, I, I'm definitely open to hearing it. I think this council is very open to hearing it. But I think the best thing we can do, Mayor, is, is apply pressure at the state level. Um, I just don't know what else we could do. Work with the county. Uh, uh, yeah, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Um, uh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in addition to advocating at the state level, I'm hoping that our staff, um, the housing staff and our public information staff can help to continue to spread the word about Front Door and that Flagstaff residents who, um, are needing some help in terms of housing should contact Front Door, and you can get to Front Door through either Flagstaff Shelter Services or Catholic charities. or Catholic Charities of Flagstaff, and they can put you in touch with any available resources in town in terms of housing. And so I would hope that we would all continue to help get that word out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. With the with this also, you know, this isn't going to go away. I mean, yes, the federal government has stepped in, delayed it another month. We're going to be facing this issue eventually, and I hopefully, hope that we can get the state and federal assistance to help the individuals in our community that are going to be facing these issues. I do want this to be part of our discussions and back of our minds, definitely, as we move forward, to problem solve, get outreach for the Front Door, as Vice Mayor Daggett stated. That is a program I was not even aware of before taking office, and knowing that is helpful, and hopefully we can do more outreach with this and other programs to assist. And I would like to see if we could get a, potentially a presentation from staff that could help look at holistically what are what services are available, how to contact, where to contact, what's the current data on possible evictions of the community? If there might be a potential present that we could see to kind of lay out the whole spectrum. I think that would be, it would be really helpful to also know, you know, where the federal, state, and local jurisdictions lie, et cetera, so that way we get a good picture. I believe we have a hand up from, sorry, I didn't see who that was. Oh, it's down now. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick, everybody. I also wanted to mention along those same lines as Vice Mayor Daggett. The county, I'm unsure if anyone at the city knows where the county is with their funding, but the county does have a rent mortgage support fund. There is an application process, but I know that the county has put additional funds into that bank to help with individuals. That update that I just shared is outdated, is from months ago, so I'm not too sure where they're at now. They might very well be out, but that, if anyone listening or if anyone knows people needing support, look, check in with the county. The county also has, okay, actually, can we jump to Ms. Dar really quick?
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Dar.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney. The county is not out of money related to eviction prevention and utility assistance. So that process to the public would apply at King Street location. I believe there are actually applications in the tent in the parking lot. The other access, of course, is through the Front Door. The Front Door program is the front door to anyone who is either experiencing homelessness or is on the verge of losing their housing or has general housing needs. And those front doors, as mentioned previously, are Catholic charities located on Fourth Street and Flagstaff Shelter Services located on Huntington. Those doors are your first stop for anyone in the public needing assistance. That's your first stop for saying, "I am in jeopardy of losing my housing. I've lost my housing. I'm afraid I'm going to lose my housing." That is, while that's only two organizations, those are our front doors to accessing housing assistance with organizations throughout our community. The other resource I'd like to toss out there is Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, which does foreclosure prevention work. If you are behind in your mortgage or you know someone who is in jeopardy of being foreclosed upon, I encourage early action, and Housing Solutions is there to help households navigate that kind of unknown and sometimes scary environment. So county's not out of money. Front Door is Catholic charities and Flagstaff Shelter Services. Foreclosure prevention is Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. Thank you so much for the opportunity to add.
One follow-up for you, Ms. Dar. Do you know the name of the effort at the county where they're trying to gather a list of emergency service supports for members in the county?
Not the effort you're referring to specifically. However, we do, through the Social Safety Net Coalition, have gathered a quite comprehensive listing of resources throughout the community, not only related to housing, but food, assistance payments, mental health services, and, I'm missing one, childcare and housing. So I can share that list. Is that the one you're thinking of?
I think that's it. And the county is kind of orchestrating this, right?
So the County and United Way have partnered to bring together all the agencies within the Social Safety Net, and we have the working groups, housing, food, assistance, payments, et cetera, within that group. So I think we're on the same page, and I can send that list. I'm not sure if it's current. It was updated within the last two weeks. It also has some tribal resources included within it as well, and I can email that out to council.
Okay, and then the last couple of things I wanted to share is I believe St. Vincent de Paul also does financial support. And again, I spoke to them about half a year ago, but they were telling me that they had money and no one was asking for it. So let's connect those resources, right?
You are not wrong. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So you can say that anytime. I welcome that feedback. I appreciate that. And then lastly, in full disclosure, I do work part-time for a nonprofit called FlagstaffResources.com, and there's over 500 resources listed on FlagstaffResources.com, including rent support, food support. I mean, you name it, it's all there. So if anyone in the public is needing help, definitely check out that website. Thank you.
The other resource currently with eviction prevention support in our community is the Salvation Army. Quite often Salvation Army has not had resources in eviction prevention, and this year they do. The other thing is to call you utility companies. I know that APS is working with households that are behind in their utility payments, but households need to call. They need to talk to the utility company. They need to say, "Here's where I am, and here's what I've got going on," in order to access. Sometimes there's forgiveness, and sometimes there's resources. So the key is, please call any of those entities in order to access help and resources.
Mayor, one more. Ms. Dar, is there a way that we can get that list of folks on that foreclosure list and basically send them a list of all these resources that we just discussed?
Councilmember Shimoney, no. Foreclosed households being foreclosed upon are not public until there's a foreclosure sale announced at the steps of the courthouse generally. However, we have been distributing it via multiple community service agencies through our listservs. We also did an eviction prevention packet that was just, and this was in partnership with the County, United Way, us. I'm actually the one who ended up doing the layout, because we have the tools to do so, and Catholic charities. And we printed those packets. The county paid for the printing. Those were distributed to multiple multifamily or apartment complexes throughout the community, as well as social service agencies, and a PDF copy was provided via our social service listserv, et cetera. And so we have put effort into making sure as many people as we can let know about, know about the eviction prevention resources. It's clearly time for us to update that with the extension of the eviction moratorium to January 31st, and we can do so. Last, I checked that was available on our website, but things have been changing so rapidly. I'll work on that this week and make sure that those resources are current and present.
So can we get some kind of flyer or PDF poster put up at the city courthouse and the county court facilities?
Sure, absolutely. We will make one up. I've been in weekly communication with DNA People's Legal Services as well, talking about the number of eviction filings that they are aware of or folks that are contacting their office, not only in Flagstaff proper, but within our county itself. And so we're, I've emailed the Arizona Multi-Housing Association, trying to see if they have any statistics on what these numbers look like. Unfortunately, they don't, at least with any degree of accuracy. They said within early January that they possibly will have some different numbers to share, but that they don't have their arms wrapped around it either. So we are working on multiple fronts in order to be able to identify resources for our community, as well as be able to quantify the wave that's coming so that we can best be prepared in order to address it. The good news is that the county still has funding in this area, and the utility companies, by and large, have been willing to work with households.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dar, and Councilmember Shimoney. You're on the same train of thought I was going to be going on, which was, yeah, our resources in particular, matching them to who needs it, obviously, but whatever you can put together for us, council members, so that we can share, or Ms. Dar, if you could, whether it's a PDF or a list of resources, or I'm envisioning something like, "I'm about to be evicted. What do I do? Step one, step two, step three," something that makes it very clear what people can do, give them a course of action, potentially maybe rather than just a big dump of resources that, you know, people are real, especially in stressful and economic downturns, et cetera. It's nice to have some clear steps amidst the chaos. So if we could get that, that would be great. And thank you, Ms. Dar, just on the comments that you'd be happy to. So I appreciate that a lot. All right, counsel, do we have any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, well, I think that wraps up our Agenda Item 9. We are now down to Agenda Item Number 10 for our COVID-19 updates. City staff.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel, Shannon Anderson. Tonight's COVID update is going to include some information on proclamations as well as executive orders. So I'm going to turn it over to city attorney Sterling Solomon before I share the data information for this week.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Deputy City Manager Anderson. Let me see if I can get my screen shared with you here. And let me know when you can all see that.
I'm not seeing it yet.
Anybody seeing it yet?
I am not seeing it, no.
Going to attempt to share that one more time. Let's go here. And here.
Sterling, I believe it's working.
Can you see me now? All right. Excellent. Let me make sure it's in presentation mode. Can you verify that it is?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So city council, mayor, city council, and staff, I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. As Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson indicated, she's asked me to talk about the interplay between proclamations and executive orders with respect to authority, and I will say that these are going to be general statements of law. There's no legal analysis involved here, as I mentioned just a little while ago. If you need more detail and legal analysis, that would require an executive session, or I could put together a legal memo if you want that as well. But just an outline of the way I'm going to walk through this tonight, and it's not going to take very long. We did touch on it briefly during the retreat. That was probably from a, what I would say, a 30,000-foot level. We're going to drop closer down, maybe 5,000 feet, but I will not be in the weeds. Again, that would require some sharing of legal analysis and so on. But again, that general authority on both proclamations and on the governor's authority to do executive orders, issue executive orders, will be discussed, and how they apply specifically to the city of Flagstaff. So without any further ado, the mayor does have authority to declare a state of emergency. The mayor did so last year during the museum fire, did so during prior snow events that we had had in the city of Flagstaff. It's not uncommon. What declaration of emergency does is typically opens the door for funding from state and federal agencies as well. Stacy Brekler-Nags is very familiar with the process and has been extremely helpful throughout all of the emergencies that we've had to be involved in. But going back to that general authority, it's under both local and state law. Under the Flagstaff City Charter, there's reference made to martial law in Article 2, Section 7. And there's also a specific section of the city code referring to peace and order of the city and some of the things the mayor can do to preserve the peace and order of the city. And there's the section of the city code for you there. One of the other main points that I want to make here is that it's also allowed under state law. It's provided for in the Arizona Revised Statutes, which we commonly refer to as ARS, Section 26, 311B specifically, when it comes to mayors. At a county level, it would be the chair of the Board of Supervisors. One thing I want to point out here that we don't have in Flagstaff, but some of other cities around the state do have, is when a mayor declares an emergency or issues a proclamation governing under a declaration of emergency, some cities require that the council actually ratify, review and ratify that. So that's not something we have in the city of Flagstaff. Going on to the governor's authority to issue executive orders, governors can also declare an emergency under state law. Again, some of the same reasoning applies there to open the door to federal funding. The same authority in ARS Section 26 in the General 300s category exists there for the governor to not only declare the emergency, but to establish regulations, and that's typically done through executive orders. Another section of the ARS, Arizona Revised Statutes, in Title 36, 787, also gives some additional authority related to help for the governor to govern under a state of emergency through executive orders. So Governor Doug Ducey did declare the first declaration of an emergency came on March 11th, 2020, related to COVID-19, something that I'll go back to the slide before. As indicated above here, mayors have the authority unless preempted under state or federal law.
Sorry, I jumped to city attorney. I have not seen any of this. I'm still on the title slide. Are others having that issue too?
I am seeing the title slide as well, Sterling.
That's all you're seeing?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if we can.
Sterling, if you could try sharing your screen rather than the program, that might alleviate some of the issues.
Yeah, let me go ahead and do that.
Sterling, I'm able to advance this on my computer. I was.
I was as well.
We're able to advance because he shared the PowerPoint file instead of his window or his.
Yes. So Sterling, we can proceed. You can ask to advance this, and we're able to do that for you if that's an easier way to go.
Well, one of the issues, I apologize. I thought I had shared my screen, and let me go back and do that. How does that look?
That actually looks like it might work better, if you want to try and do the slideshow.
Sure.
Yeah, that works. Thanks, Sterling.
My apologies. Here I am, rambling on and walking through. I thought I had shared my screen. Okay, so again, these are general statements, no legal analysis here. And the general authority is what I'm reviewing, as well as just how that applies specifically to the city of Flagstaff through both the proclamations and the executive orders. These were the points that I indicated where the mayor has authority to issue proclamations and issue or to declare an emergency under state law, as well as our charter, as well as city code. And the operative language from the city code is there under 12212, which you see peace and which you see peace and order of the city. What I was referring to with respect to the governor's executive orders, um, the same section, the sections, uh, 26, 300s and Title 26, that's where those authorities are established with respect to, to declaring an emergency. But when there's a health issue, uh, also under Title 36, 787, as you see there. Um, and a-again, the governor does have authority to preempt or overrule, if you will, local regulations. And that's exactly what I'm going to, uh, discuss here, uh, in more detail right now. Uh, obviously, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, Mayor Evans declared the emergency on March 15th of 2020, and there were ensuing, ensuing governing proclamations, which came first on, uh, March 16th of 2020, in which several, um, local government, obviously the government facilities that we have, but also many local businesses and establishments were closed, um, due to, uh, or attempting to, um, prevent the spread of COVID-19. Uh, about 10 days later, there was a second proclamation, very specific to closing hair and nail salons and other similar businesses and establishments. And then fast forward to June, a few months later, uh, on June 18th, and I'll, I'll talk about why here in a little bit, but a third proclamation mandating face coverings, uh, was issued. Um, moving on to the governor's executive orders and where the preemption starts to come into play. On March 19th, uh, four days after, three days after, um, many mayors across the state, uh, kind of followed the lead, if you will, of Flagstaff, of Mayor Evans, in closing several businesses and government buildings and other establishments around the city. Uh, the governor issued an executive order, which contained, you know, many of the same closures as the March 16th proclamation, again, that came first from Flagstaff. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't step back to that slide and say there were a lot of people, uh, lifting this slide here, a lot of people lifting here in the city of Flagstaff to help with this. We had every member of my office on the civil side reviewing, uh, issues with respect to the authority to, to, to have the mayor, uh, de-declare the emergency as well as close businesses. Uh, we had, uh, people from my office in the, in the, uh, prosecution section, uh, talking about the enforcement side. Uh, our PD advisor, uh, was also involved, Mary Ann Sullivan, Kevin Finsell, several of my staff, who were very, very helpful, as well as, uh, the, uh, city manager's office. When the state's preemption first started to roll out, Governor Ducey issued, um, on March 23rd, Executive Order 202012, uh, which basically defined generally some essential functions or services, as were referred to in this and subsequent executive orders, talking about these essential services. It included some general preempt, preemption language, you know, effectively preventing cities and towns from mandating the closure of some of these kinds of businesses. Um, but it got more specific, um, on March 30th, not, uh, more than a week later. Uh, Governor Ducey issued Executive Order 202018. And this stated much more specifically that cities couldn't make or issue an order, rule or regulation that conflicts with the policy directives or intent of this executive order. And that's the same kind of language that continued. Um, uh, about a month later, on April 29th, uh, Governor Ducey again issued another Executive Order 202033 with the same preemptive language stating that cities and towns couldn't do anything that conflicted with the executive order. Um, or, um, you, you know, basically governed by, by local regulation, anything that he had indicated in his executive orders. And that harkens back to those essential functions or essential services, which were very broad, and there were very few things that, that were left. That language became even more restrictive in a, in a preemptive fashion on May 12th, uh, when Governor Ducey issued Executive Order 202036. It actually rescinded one of the previous executive orders, um, but it contained the similar preemptive language about not conflicting with this or other executive orders. But there was some additional language here that said, quote, "In addition to the policies, directives or intent of this executive order, cities and towns couldn't do anything, um, that even added to." So the preemption rose, uh, essentially about as high as it could rise and still remains there. Um, there was one carve-out on June 17th, 2020. Uh, Governor Ducey ordered, um, he carved out a preempt, a little bit of the preemption for cities and towns, allowing them to mandate face coverings. Uh, in that language that you see there, where cities could adopt policies to prevent the spread of COVID-19 by mandating face coverings. And the next day, Mayor Evans did so. She issued Flagstaff's Third Proclamation and mandated face coverings. The, um, state preemption continued under other executive orders that came after that on June 29th, uh, Order 202043, reclosed some of the businesses which he had previously allowed to reopen, such as gyms and theaters. Um, this executive order did differ a little bit from the state's previous preemptive stance. Not much. It just allowed local involvement, uh, more local involvement, not complete local involvement on events that are 50 or, or more people. Um, but it continued to, you know, preempt our local authority on most everything else. So not much change. Um, moving forward, on July 23rd, he issued Executive Order 202052, which essentially stated that, uh, 202043, the preemption that said anything can't even be added by, by s- local authorities, counties or cities. And he said this will be reviewed every two weeks until it's either repealed or revised. There's been no rescission of 202052, no repeal has occurred. So it still remains effective today. And the previous preemptive language from 202043, that means, still stands. Um, finally, uh, with the state's, um, preemption of, of, uh, you know, dine-in restaurants, bars and, and things like that, we can't issue any orders on that. The state actually eased, Governor Ducey did, with 202060. He eased the temporary extension of premises regulations. And these are for businesses that hold liquor licenses. It allows them greater social distancing by serving alcohol outside. If you look at the timing of it and you consider Pima County and Maricopa County are in the warm climate of the state of Arizona, that this was to allow businesses to serve alcohol, uh, down in, in the warmer parts of the state, outdoors, uh, to allow more customers to be accommodated. So no change to the, to the preemption for the city. I mentioned, um, Executive Order 202043. It reclosed back in June when we saw a spike. Uh, it reclosed some of the businesses which Governor Ducey had previously allowed to reopen. Um, without going into a lot of detail here, several businesses, initially a gym, but a lot of businesses jumped on board. They sued the governor for ordering them to reclose after they spent a bunch of money, uh, to comply with what it took to reopen. Uh, again, without getting into too much detail, they prevailed on an argument that they needed a, a process to be able to prove that they had complied. So the state was, uh, required to establish a process for gyms and other businesses, allowing them to obtain what we call an attestation, showing that they have complied and that they can reopen as long as they remain in compliance. But that is essentially the, uh, summary of the preemption, uh, when it comes to proclamations that we can issue here at the city, uh, that the, that the mayor can issue. And that preemption still exists today through those executive orders. There are many other executive orders, uh, obviously, but the, these are the meat of the preemption, and that's, uh, essentially what I wanted to present to you tonight. Obviously, I'm open to any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, City Attorney. I, I really appreciate the chronological, uh, list of the executive orders, how's the, how this has progressed and in the inclusion of the language in there. I know I've been bugging you about daily about this quite a bit this last week, so I appreciate you putting this together and, um, presenting it. Uh, council members, do we have any, uh, questions for, of City Attorney Solomon? All right, well, I think, oh.
Mayor, if I may, uh, I, I, that is an open invitation to continue bugging me. If you have additional questions, please feel free to call. That goes for you and, and the rest of the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on with the rest of the COVID update.
Thanks, Sterling, uh, for sharing that information with council. I'll go ahead and bring up, uh, the presentation, remaining portions of the presentation. So again, our update today included the proclamations and executive orders that Sterling's, uh, Solomon just reviewed. Um, we'll go over the data, um, as well as an Indigenous Nations update, uh, this evening. Uh, so in looking at the, um, weekly cases for COVID, uh, we are at 484 cases for week ending December 12th. Um, the age groups 20 to 44, as well as 45 to 54, remain the highest case incidences. The number of COVID cases, um, still are highest in zip codes 86001, as well as 86004. But both areas did see a, a decrease when you compare them to the numbers that they were experiencing last week. When looking at the number of daily cases, I pulled this updated chart, um, as of today. Um, there has been 445 new cases reported since December 12th, which was the chart we just saw in the Flagstaff area. Hospital admissions, uh, we are still, uh, remaining high at 32 hospital admissions, uh, recorded for week ending December 12th. I have included again the hospital admission chart, um, that is provided by the Coconino County Health and Human Services School update. Um, this information does come from Flagstaff Medical Center. Uh, it's received on a weekly basis by Coconino County Health and Human Services. So the information before you is included on their report on Friday, December 18th. And they were in receipt of this information on Wednesday, December 16th. Uh, when I look at, um, some of the, um, national data that's being provided as well, also seems to be provided on a weekly basis, um, but those are looking at Friday through Thursday. The ICU beds on this chart are equivalent to the critical care beds you will see in the hospital census later on in the presentation from the Northern Arizona Healthcare website. This report includes 41 ICU beds. The emergency department and the medical surgical bed availability at the bottom of the chart are included in the bed capacity, um, that you'll see later in the presentation on the Northern Arizona Healthcare website. There's 147 medical surgical beds available and 36 emergency department beds available for the purposes of this report. Still need to follow up with FMC to confirm my understanding, um, but it does appear that, uh, the numbers that we see on their website, um, are consistent, uh, with the hospitalizations included here. I've also begun examining, again, the national report on provided health and human services that were recently published to determine if there's additional information that will be available or more, and it, or a more advantageous reporting schedule. I will keep council informed, um, as I continue to learn more. Um, based on cursory looks today, um, it does look like the data is fairly similar. Um, it's one or two off, but I think that's again, because we're looking at a Wednesday report here. Um, and again, the national is a Thursday through Friday. The COVID-related deaths, um, this weekly report includes three COVID-related deaths for week ending December 12th. However, there was a report during Monday's COVID EOC call stating that there had been a report of 182 deaths. So this chart, uh, more than likely will be updated for the weeks prior, um, to December 12th to include, uh, that report of 182. Community transmission, uh, you will see, I'm gonna move my dialogue box here. Um, you will see that the community transmission, um, is now substantial. Um, it has moved, uh, given that the three benchmarks have been insubstantial for consecutive two weeks. Um, all three benchmarks would have to reduce to a moderate or a minimal level for two consecutive weeks for this to change back to moderate. You'll see 605 cases per 100,000, uh, for this weekly report, compared to 630.1 for last week. 15.2% positivity rate compared to 15.8% for last week. And 18.7% for COVID-like illnesses compared to 13.8%. The Arizona Department of Health Services Dashboard. Um, this was the business dashboard that was, um, referenced that allows for certain businesses to open after they, um, finish, uh, an assessment. Um, this is still showing moderate, uh, because again, this information is only recorded through November 29th, um, because there's a two-week delay built into the dashboard at the state level. Um, they've done that to ensure that they're, uh, posting complete data versus, um, things that might not have everything recorded. The Northern Arizona Healthcare Hospital Census, um, again, is including a decrease in the positive, as well as the number of pending COVID patients. The 184 hospital bed capacity, um, again, matches the emergency department and the medical surgical beds that were included in the Coconino County Health and Human Services School update. And the 33 ICU or critical care beds matches, again, the ICU capacity, number and percentage you also saw in that school report. I will turn it over now to Rose Tohe, um, to go over the Indigenous Nations data as well as the update. Rose, I'm gonna get out of presentation mode for a moment so I can mute myself.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this is Rose Tohe, Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. Um, greetings to mayor and council members. And the, the ones that I'd like to, um, highlight again for Navajo Nation is, um, the, the positive cases, which, this is as of, um, December 18th of last Friday. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And I apologize, I think in your report, I, it, there was a different date, and actually it's supposed to be 12/18. And I, and I updated that date for the leadership. So for the positive cases, um, for the week of 12/10 to 12/17, in those seven days, that increased by 1,452. And then, um, the deaths have increased to 33 for Navajo Nation. And then if you can go to the Hopi. So right now, um, those, in the seven days that, um, that are up there, um, the positive cases have increased to 82 within the seven days. And then also, um, the Hopi tribal members, um, that has increased to 67 of those 82 that have been, um, that are positive. So those have been, um, been real hard on, on, of course, on the tribal members. Um, and I just want to make a, a, a small correction on the, um, counts. In the past reports, I had said that, um, there were 9,000, around 9,000 of, um, Hopi members. Actually, there are actually, um, around 19, or 20,000 as of the, um, census counts. But half of those, around 9,000, 10,000, are living on the, uh, on Hopi lands. I just want to make that clarification. Um, as far as the, um, Indigenous Nations report, the rest of this stuff, I just want to also just highlight the, um, the public health emergency order for Navajo Nation remains the same. Um, that has been put into place on 12/3. And that remains, um, the lockdown order as well. And those are for three consecutive weeks, um, starting December 11th through the 28th. And that will be revisited, um, depending on what the nation decides at that time. that will be revisited depending on what the nation decides at that time. Again, they are expecting this, this wave that is now on the Navajo Nation to be very much worse than the first wave. So I just wanted to expand upon that regarding that order and saying that it will probably be, that it would be reevaluated on 12/28. And then, as according to a press release on December 16th, in a response to the official requests from FEMA with support from Navajo Nation leaders, the US Department of Defense and the, also the US Department of Health and Human Services were deploying, excuse me, deploying federal medical personnel to health, healthcare facilities on Navajo Nation that week to help provide some relief to the health facility and the healthcare workers. And then on the press release for 12/15 from the Office of Navajo Nation President, the Navajo Area Indian Health Services completed the delivery and distribution of its first allocation of the Pfizer vaccines in the amount of 3,900. So those were delivered to the healthcare facilities on Navajo Nation. And then, on 12/18, there were no further updates on Navajo Nation healthcare facilities for that week. So the week before that, they were reporting that they were near capacity with limited options for transferring patients elsewhere. And at that time, the Navajo Area Indian Health Services Medical Chief Medical Officer had said they were planning for possibility of rationing supplies, equipment, and medication because they were expecting, again, the second wave to be worse. As far as Hopi Nation, I'll just, also just wanted to express some numbers regarding Navajo Nation is there are around 330 enrolled, 330,000 enrolled members, and around 50% of those are living on Navajo Nation lands, just to give you an idea of some, some numbers As far as Hopi is concerned, the 11 November 9th reinstatement of the Hopi's executive stay-at-home order is still in effect, and it says until further notice. Those are restrictions and limitations for the businesses and individuals to restrict their movement and only for essential needs. And again, the Hopi members are encouraged, highly encouraged to use personal responsibility. And the, what remains also the same is the KUYI Radio is reporting saying that the, the notice on essential services was that it would be affecting immediately all business services within the boundaries of the Hopi reservation to cease operations and to reduce operating hours from 8:00, or 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then they also report that the Hopi Healthcare Center also received their coronavirus vaccines in the initial shipment of 150 Pfizer vaccines. And, and they were gonna be provided to the health workers and residents of long care, long-term healthcare facilities. That is currently what I have, and there were, of course, some tribal offices that were, that were closed, and then also Hopi community health representatives that were conducting door-to-door welfare, welfare checks on, in all the communities and trying to make sure that families were, were, their information was being verified for emergency contact and just gathering information on the number of people, ages, and capability for designating, see if they have designated rooms for quarantine or isolations for those families. So that's what I have for this evening, and also just a quick note to mayor and council is that on my reports, I'll be taking some time off starting tomorrow through January 4th, till 8:00 AM on January 4th. So I'll be sending reports until then, January 8th will be your first report again, if you don't mind. And I also want to take this time to wish you all a very safe and blessed holiday season, mayor and council members, as well as city leaders and staff.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tohe, and I'm glad you're taking some time off to recharge. I think that's great for all of us to be doing. And I do also want to thank Ms. Anderson for the data validation. I really appreciate being able to have, have that and, you know, make sure everything's all synced up. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Council, do we have any questions? Councilmember Shimoney.
I have a quick question for Deputy C-Manager Anderson. You might mention this, correct me if I'm wrong. Can you talk a little bit about the vaccines that are being rolled out vocally? My understanding is that members at FMC, and mayor, you might know about this better than anyone else, but my understanding is that FMC employees are receiving the vaccine today, as of today, and that as of, I think, next week, other frontline workers such as our service providers will be receiving the vaccine. Is that accurate?
So, Councilmember Shimoney, I do know that FMC were going to be immunizing their own staff as part of Phase 1A, but the update didn't include specifically what date that was going to occur. They did report the vaccinations were gonna be received later this week, and that was as of Monday, so that it, it seems to coincide with what you are expressing. I do know that Phase 1B will include frontline essential workers, which does include our police and fire group. Chief Gaylord has been keeping in contact with Coconino County Health and Human Services to make sure as soon as that vaccine is available, that our crews are ready and able to go, as well as Chief Musselman. That Phase 1B will also include individuals aged 75 or older, as the recommendation is worded right now, but they did indicate that they were still waiting for adoption of these recommendations by the CDC.
And also, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that was the vaccination update that we had received on Monday.
And I'll add to that, Ms. Anderson, is that in my understanding, 1B also includes folks living in congregant, living situations like our shelters. And so that's a big deal for our unsheltered population, and that hopefully 1B will be vaccinated by the end of January, but everything can change, right?
Yes, it seems like the vaccination information seems to be updated on a weekly basis.
Thank you. All I'll add on to that, I was wondering, do we have any timeline at this point regarding when our first responders can be inoculated? I know it's in the 1B, but when, when might we expect that?
I don't have a specific date. I don't know, Chief Gaylord, if you've heard anything more recent than our conversation yesterday? If you have, I would just ask that you chime in, please.
Well, that's fine. I just, I know there's a lot of shifting sands with all of this so often, and even if we had a date, we can't really know exactly that that's the day what's gonna happen. So, yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that our first responders get it as soon as possible. I know you all are on that fully, and I just want to make sure we're taking, taking care of everyone. Councilmembers, do we have any other questions regarding our COVID presentation? It doesn't look that way. All right, well, done with Agenda Item Number 10. We are now to Agenda Item Number 11 for Public Participation. Ms. Fobar has just indicated that we do not have any additional public participations, so I will skip right along here to Agenda Item Number 12, our informational items too from mayor, council, and city manager, and future agenda item requests. Council, opening up the floor. Well, I guess, oh, okay, yes, we normally do, that's right, we normally go down the list. So let's start with Vice Mayor Daggett, and we'll just go down as roll call with any information items you may have. So Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. I just received my copy of Walking Flagstaff, which is a photo book created by Flagstaff resident George Breed. And I highly recommend this book. It's available downtown at Brightside Books, and it's also available through Solstice Publishing and Brightside Books. For those of you who haven't shopped there during this time, you can place an order and they will bring it to the curb for you, and Solstice apparently will deliver it to your house. So I don't know how much easier it gets than that, but this is a gorgeous book from All Around Flagstaff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, let's go down here and let's go just alphabetical. Councilmember Aslan.
I guess that would be me. I've got nothing tonight, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember McCarthy.
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also am showing a book called Conscious Capitalism. This is pretty much the guiding book for Quality Connections Board. So I've been recently been invited to join the Board of Quality Connections. If you're not familiar with Quality Connection, it's that nonprofit who provide services at all levels to, to our citizens with disabilities, from childcare to home care, to, to education and training, and to employment, which is their QC office that provides, that supplies, office supplies and homes, that provides office supplies and home supplies. So Conscious Capitalism, that will be my reading this, this holidays, and I want to wish everyone, mayor and council and staff, team Flagstaff, a safe, wonderful, blessed holidays, from my grateful heart to yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, mayor, and, okay, I have a few things as usual. Surprise, surprise. First of all, I want to say congratulations to our chief, Police Chief Dan Musselman. He worked hard to become our police chief, and I am so proud that he is our police chief. And I'm so, I'm very confident in his leadership and his desires and his passion to best the community of Flagstaff through our police department. And over the last year or so, I've gotten the honor of to work with him very closely, and it's been a pleasure, and I'm very much looking forward to the work ahead of us, which there's plenty of. So Chief Dan, that's what we were calling him at one of our meetings this morning, and it has a nice ring to it. Thank you for your service, congratulations. And kind of as the title goes with Chief Dan, it's a very approachable kind of title, I feel like, and with his name, and I just feel like Chief Musselman is a very approachable person. So if anyone in the public, sorry, chief, but if anyone in the public does want to reach out to Chief Dan and communicate with him, he's very reachable and, and he's very accessible. So congratulations, chief, and congratulations to the whole city of Flagstaff. Leading that into my next point, we had an alternative work group meeting this morning in terms of alternative responses. That group has been expanding, and it's, it's been very productive. We have some really good things we're talking about, and these things will be reaching council hopefully in the somewhat of the near future, in the months to come. And, yeah, very exciting, lots of good things going on, and I look forward to our future conversations about alternative responses and what we're doing with the folks after we pick them up or respond to the calls, so to speak. I had a comment for staff and for the city manager. You know, as we see new leadership at the federal level, I'm wondering, how are we going to stay on top of all the opportunities that are gonna be arising? And, you know, maybe it's through our congressional leadership that we communicate with, or maybe our federal lobbyists that we communicate with, or even, I've heard through the grapevine that Stacy BK is a rock star when it comes to having her finger on the pulse of the federal grant opportunities. And so I'm just wondering, you know, it seems like with the new administration, there might be a lot of room for, I see Sarah Langley, yep, exactly, I forgot to mention Sarah, but you're 100% right, city manager. You know, there's gonna be a lot of opportunities, I feel like, and it'd be great if we can stay on that ball and ahead of the curve and be ready for it. Just economic developments, infrastructure, all the good stuff. I just think that might be some good opportunity. City Manager, did you want to mention anything on that?
May I jump in here, mayor?
Of course, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, councilmember. No, I don't think I can add to what you just said. It was a nice summary of things. I would emphasize, I think we do have the good resource, very good resources in place to be monitoring things that do become available, not just grant-wise, but across the spectrum. So between our intergov and our lobbyists and our grant expert and our congressional delegates, we will keep our fingers on the pulse, and I believe Stacy BK does have her hand up.
Actually, I accidentally hit my hand up, but I wanted to say thank you. And I think our team of Sarah and Jack Fidget and all the federal lobbyists that we've got, and I'm constantly getting emails and looking at grant opportunities and sending them out to staff, so really appreciate that. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you. And then just a couple more bullet points, council. Just want to give a shout out to the community. I've seen a lot of posts, especially in more community group forums on Facebook in regards to people needing support and help, and just hundreds of comments of people providing support and help. And I just think that we have a beautiful community that really is, is working together the best it can to support one another during these hard times and support local businesses too. And so shout out to the community, and, and then shout out to this council, to you, mayor, and to the new council. I think we're off to a great start. I'm very excited. I'm hopeful and optimistic at the pace that we're moving at and the synergy that we have. And I'm just feeling really good about things. So thank you, mayor, especially, and thank you, new council, for, for this, this, this good feeling that I feel. And I'm very excited for the city of Flagstaff and the community at large. And then last point, enjoy the break. We have a two-week break right now. Happy holidays, happy New Years. Take care of yourselves, be safe, and see you all in a couple weeks. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Sweet.
Thank you. I want to give a huge thank you to the DBA and, I'm assuming, council and staff on the gazebo's downtown. I am downtown every day. I've been seeing them being
I've been seeing them being put to good use. And I have enjoyed one of them for a, a little snack in between my jobs as well. And I just really appreciate the effort in keeping options open for our small businesses. And I did meet with Councilmember Shimoney and staff on sidewalk accessibility. And I will say I will never look at a sidewalk the same, it was so cool. So thank you, um, Councilmember Shimoney for including me on that. That was very cool, and I look forward to more sidewalk discussions. And other than that, I just would love to wish all of you a happy holiday. And thank you again for just making me feel so at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh, City Manager, you have a comment?
I have a follow-up, and thank you, um, for the comments just now. I want to, uh, specifically give some credit to this, um, Expanded Use of Rice-Away team. We call it Euro, that's the acronym. It is an Expanded Use of Rice-Away team that came about, um, through the, the COVID pandemic and the resulting, uh, limitations upon crowd capacity and indoor dining and so forth. And, uh, we've been, uh, that team is comprised largely of city staff, but also with representation from the Downtown Business Alliance. That team has been meeting, uh, frequently, like two or three times a week throughout this pandemic, uh, uh, coming up with ideas and, such as the use of the alley, uh, the partial closure on Aspen, and now what you've made reference to with respect to the gazebo's in Heritage Plaza. Uh, Rebecca Sayers heads up that team, and she's done just a, an amazing job with it. But it really is a collaborative effort. I'm glad it's being recognized. And even though the focus is in the downtown area, we're really looking at, uh, things we can do throughout the, uh, community to, uh, help mitigate and, and, uh, the impacts of, of COVID, but more importantly, uh, keep people safe through social distancing and, and mostly through being outdoors. So, uh, the Euro team is behind that, and thanks for mentioning the gazebo's. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, well, I guess that's, it's my turn. Um, first of all, yes, congratulations.
Um, City Manager Clifton, you did have one other item that you wanted to discuss with Council tonight?
Have we, uh, gone through the entire list of Council members? Because I was going to wait until the end.
Um, we still have Mayor DZ to go, if you would like to wait till he is done.
And that's, that would be my preference, Mayor, if you want to go ahead. And then what I have is just a housekeeping matter, thank you.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, thank you, uh, well, congratulations to our new Chief Musselman. It was a, a pleasure to, uh, be in a meeting with you earlier today, and I'm looking forward to, um, your continued leadership and, uh, and the safety of our community. Um, I also would just like to thank city staff, the retreat, for the retreat last week. I thought it was very well-organized, put together, a lot of great information. And I think we have, uh, hit, hit on the right foot coming forward here. And I, I really appreciate the, uh, yeah, all, all of your work to getting here. Um, I'll just wrap up. One, one thing I was going to mention to City Manager, it might be nice to do, is on these calls, uh, I've found in some, some instances, it's really nice to have some little bit of sign language for efficiencies in meetings and so forth. So thank you, likewise, yes, et cetera. It might be fun to have for, uh, just city staff in general, not necessarily the council meeting. But I, I've, I've, I keep wanting to go like this, and just so if, uh, if you know that this, this is thank you, I, I, I just want to make sure. I tend to have that, a regular, uh, reaction. So, uh, Councilmember Shimoney, yeah. Has a, has a comment.
Okay, super quick, I'm so sorry. A shout out to Ms. Deb Harris and the Southside Community Association for setting up that COVID vigil outside City Hall this past weekend. Uh, they set up a, a very powerful display of chairs representing a hundred and eighty-two individuals who have passed in our community and, in the county. And, and, and saying that they, they might be gone, but they will not be forgotten. So thank you, Ms. Deb, and all the volunteers involved. Um, that was very beautiful and appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, yes. Uh, now, I, I really appreciate the, the work that was done and the, um, the memorial that was put forth. And thank you, Ms. Harris and the Southside Community Association for that. Uh, I guess I'll just wrap up by saying, happy holidays, everyone. I hope we can get a good break, a little respite, some time with family, friends and whatnot. Uh, it is definitely well-earned by everyone in this call, and I'm looking forward to our, um, meetings in January. Uh, so I'll turn it over to, uh, City Manager for a little housekeeping.
A very little and quick housekeeping. Uh, we do have joint meetings with the county, and we try to have those three or four times a year. Uh, there's a request to, uh, have one in January, which I personally think would be a very good idea with all our newly-elected, with both the Board of Supervisors and our City Council. Uh, the date that is, uh, out there, and we do not have to have closure on this tonight, I just want to get it on your calendar and make sure that it works, is January twenty-eighth. Uh, these are, uh, combined meetings. Uh, this one obviously will be virtual, uh, so the venue does not matter. We can, uh, it's really more the date and the time of day. Um, and if you could, um, oh, how to proceed the best. I, maybe we could just do a very quick poll to see if, if that does not work for any of you. If I could do that, Mayor, and, um, we can do that by, uh, signs, thumbs up or thumbs down on January twenty-eighth. I'll look for your videos and I'll try to do a quick tally. Thank you, Councilmember Sweet, Vice Mayor Daggett, Mayor TC.
As, sorry, it's, it's four PM?
Uh, it doesn't, has typically been the, the time, yes. And so that's a thumbs up for you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Shimoney's a yes, and Councilmember McCarthy and Aslan. I'm not seeing you just yet, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, I have to open my computer to see what my schedule is, and I'm doing that now. You prob-, you probably thought I was asleep.
I did not.
Yeah. I'm almost there.
Oh, you're fine. And, uh, Councilmember, uh, Aslan, same comment for you, please.
No, it works for me. I think there's a conflict with the Sustainability Commission, at least according to my under, but.
I see that.
That shouldn't be, that's, that's no reason to derail everything.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, are you ready for this, Greg?
Yes, I am, sir, thank you. Very good. Mayor, we have, we have had thumbs up from everybody. So thanks for allowing me to take that little tally there. We'll plan on the twenty-eighth, uh, but stay tuned on specific times and, uh, and the agenda. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I think that brings us down to, um, Agenda Item Thirteen and adjourning, uh, this meeting. I thank you all for your time and happy holidays, and we'll see you in the next year.